Seven o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you please stand to join me for the pledge, I'd like to ask you to stand for an extra moment of silence for a related Veterans Day recognition.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and universal with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to begin tonight with some recognition, so Mr. Neef?
Thank you. So, since our last meeting, our MCAS scores have been released, and as part of our presentation this evening, we'll be making a full presentation to the community about our most recent MCAS scores from the past year. We want to recognize five students who are here this evening because they received a perfect score at their level, which is an outstanding accomplishment for those students to be one of five students in the district at any grade level to have that perfect score. So I'm going to just introduce each of the students, and we'll invite the students to come up. We have a certificate for you. We invite you to come up and shake everybody's hand and receive your certificate, and I just want to congratulate you for all of your hard work, for your dedication to your own education. Achieving a perfect score is obviously not an easy thing to do, and you should be tremendously proud of all you've done. Actually, looking out on the outside, I see that several people, and maybe I should have thought of doing this, so I'm remiss for not having thought of doing it, but I think that we have some of the students' teachers here in the audience for this as well. So I don't know if the parents extended that invitation to the teachers. So that was an idea that I will definitely steal in the future that I should have done, so I was remiss to not do that. So congratulations to those teachers who had students who had perfect scores as well, because ultimately, it is an effort of a lot of people. It's the support of parents, it's the support of the school, it's the support of teachers, but most importantly, it's the individual effort of those students. So congratulations to each and every one of you. So we'll call you up one at a time. We'll start with third grade, well, last year's third grade student, this year's fourth grade student, Lucy Sterns, who scored a perfect score in third grade math. So Lucy, if you can come up.
Congratulations.
I thought I had him in order. I thought I had him in order.
Nice job. Hold on, I just got something for you.
Congratulations.
Great job.
For a perfect score, I want to make sure we get it on the mic, for a perfect score for fifth grade math last year, Luke Holden.
Good job, Luke.
Great job, Luke.
With a perfect score in ELA in grade six MCAS last year, Morgan Reed Davis. And with a perfect score in ninth grade Intro to Physics, Jared Staples.
Congratulations, Jared. You're welcome.
And for a perfect score in 10th grade ELA, Holly Lazon. So we'd like to thank again, thank everybody for being here, and congratulations to each one of those students. Surely, we'd invite you all to stay for the meeting. You're more than welcome to stay, but we'd fully understand if you made a decision not to. Took that as the angle.
Congratulations, guys, thanks. Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
It's always nice to start with something good like that, right?
Absolutely.
All right, well, moving on, we'll go to comments from the general public. Nobody jumping to the mic, comments from the EAPC.
Be brief. Congratulations to all those students, obviously a great achievement for all. Just this being said, this will be the last meeting before Thanksgiving and everything. I wish everybody a great holiday, were with your family, enjoy the time off, and enjoy. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Same to you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
I don't, Captain's Council?
Yeah, we have Captain's Council, yep.
Excellent. Come on up, guys.
No student council representative tonight, but we have Captain's Council.
Nice to see you guys.
It'd be great if you just introduced yourselves to the committee, that'd be great.
We're both cross-country captains. My name's Matt.
I'm Megan.
And right now, we're just going to run through the look of fall sports, how they won, how they lost, whatever they went through, what they succeeded in and stuff. So first up, we got girls soccer, who won five games, tied two, lost 11 games. Hopefully, they'll bring it up more next season. Boys soccer, bringing it really well. They've got 10 wins and five losses. They made it into the tournament and won the first game of the tournament. Unfortunately, they lost the second one.
Golf has two wins and 14 losses, and then Ben Walker was the All-Star for golf. The cheerleading team got second in one of their competitions. And then for girls cross-country, we had five wins and two losses, and we were also the small school league champion for the third year in a row.
Congratulations.
The boys' cross-country team was unfortunately not quite as successful with zero wins and seven losses. However, we did have a member of our team make it onto All-State. Christopher Shown will be running this Saturday at Wrentham again, so we're very excited to see him hopefully place in that. Football, got four wins and six losses, but they're about to face Middleborough again on Thanksgiving, so maybe you guys could show up there. The band's going to play, too.
And that's at Middleborough.
It's at Middleborough.
At Middleborough, yeah.
The field hockey team made tournament this year for the first time, and I think it was like six years, but they lost the first round in overtime.
And one final thing we're going to talk about is next Tuesday at 6:00, there's the Powderpuff game at the school. Just got to wrap that really quick. A bunch of Captain's Council kids are going to be there, going to be selling tickets. We're going to be coaching the games and stuff. Hopefully, everyone can make it. That's all.
Very nice, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on to approval of minutes. I think, Andrew, there's one, we can't really bundle these because they're not all, you're not present at all, so...
Right, she was going to read them all off.
Okay, but we can't do them as one, though, right? So you're going to do them individually, or do you want to bundle the ones? Are you missing of any?
I wasn't here for the August...
So let's just do each one of them separately then.
Yeah, we do probably do each one separately. Okay.
You got it. You can do it.
Just need a motion.
Okay, which one?
Just do them all, one at a time.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th joint meeting of the school committee and select...
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unopposed, unanimous?
I make a motion to approve the October 16th regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No opposed, it's unanimous?
I make a motion to approve the October 16th, 2017 executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, and Andrew abstains. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous, one abstention.
I make a motion to approve the August 21st, 2017 executive session minutes.
I'm abstaining.
I'm second.
Motion made in second, and Andy is abstaining on that one.
I'm sorry, I think I have those flipped. Mr. Sorel, you're abstaining from which side?
The October 16th.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Carterelli from the August 21st. Any questions or comments on those?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So unanimous with one abstention. So moving on to communications.
Okay, we have two communications this month. First, the John and Abigail Adams Scholars. So with the release of MCAS scores, they also release for our seniors, those students who are eligible for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. To be eligible, students have to score advanced and proficient in all three areas of the MCAS exam, science, ELA, and math. Their scores also have to be in the top 25% of all students in the school. So those are the two criteria. We've been fairly successful in terms of the number of students scoring advanced and proficient. You know, some years, this class in particular, I believe, like, for example, in math, they had a 40% score advanced. So not everyone who scores advanced and proficient in all three categories is a John and Abigail Adams Scholar because it's only the top 25% of the class. So there are 27 recipients this year. Being a John and Abigail Adams Scholar entitles you to free tuition at any state college or university or community college. Now remember, the tuition cost is a small part of the overall college experience, it's a much larger cost in terms of the fees. Depending on the schools, that can vary anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 a year, whether you're going to a community college or UMass Amherst. So it's still, you know, upwards of a $2,000 scholarship. If students attend a state college/university for all four years, you know, that's $8,000 off their college education, which is a nice thing. So we just wanted to read, I wanted to read the list of the students who are joining Abigail Adams Scholars. They'll be recognized at Class Day, they'll be recognized at the convocation ceremony for seniors, so they'll get a few public recognitions, which I thought would be nice to read the names tonight. So I will just read through the list of 27 students. Michaela Adams, Justin Carpenter, Riley Decourt, Jessica Dahl, Charles Garrity, Doria Dejades, Michaela Giorgio, Jerai Gregor, Samantha Grover, Sarah Hanrahan, Olivia Harris, Christopher Howard, Tess Kishba, Dalton Marshall, Holly McGeckert, Nathaniel Miller, Gillian Malloy, Cody Paz, Jacob Reddy, Jared Robbins, Matthew Roberts, who actually was just here presenting to us as Captain's Council, Justin Roman, Christopher Rosetti, Kalen Rudnick, Jaden Rosano, Dalton Souza, and Kaylee went with our John and Abigail Adams Scholars for the class of 2018.
Congratulations to all of them.
Congratulations.
Our other communication is, we just wanted the members of the committee to know that we've had a resignation from the Recreation Committee. So our committee appoints members to Recreation Committee as does the Board of Selectment. At this time, Kelly DeCalo has made a decision to resign, so she submitted her resignation on October 23rd of this year. So we'll have to be going forward to look to fill that spot. We will post that and be looking to move forward and appoint someone from the school committee to...
Scott, where does that post?
It will get posted in our office, Town Hall.
So it's not a, it's not a, it's a paper posting?
It's a paper posting.
A website.
Website.
It is on the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the process for being approved?
The school committee vote.
Okay.
So we appoint members to the Recreation Committee, the Board of Selectment appoints members. It's not, we're not in a situation like we were with Old Colony vocational, regional vocational...
That's where I was going with this.
Where we found out we had a process that we didn't know that we had. So this is just a straightforward, someone can submit their application to us, the committee will invite them in, review their application, and move forward. I mean, historically, we have, historically, there hasn't been a lot of competition, but if we had a process where three people applied for this open position, it would be the responsibility of the committee to review those applicants and make a decision on who they wanted to move forward to appoint to the board.
And they'd be involved in the new MyRec program?
Yeah.
Yes, they would. Would be some interest in that?
Yep. So yeah, we should, obviously, this is an opportunity for tonight, for members of the committee to know that we have an opening on the Recreation Committee.
Yeah, very interesting time to get involved in it.
Yes, it is. Do you want me to move into our reports?
Sure.
Very, very small personnel moves this past month, since we last met. We've had two hires of long-term PARAs subs. I believe, Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that both of these long-term PARAs were hired as a result of a move-in of a school choice student.
I believe one is and one was through a school choice that we will get refunded for.
Right, by that, they were both, one was school choice, one was?
A move-in.
A move-in, okay. So one was a, so these are both additions to our PARAs staff, but based on changes in students. So we're not increasing staff, just making people, just not increasing staff based on our current population. This is based on changes in population. One was a school choice student who came in, which we get reimbursed for through the school choice system, both for the student who's coming, and we get, the district has to pay for the aid. So it's, we get beyond just a school choice allotment. And then, obviously, we had a special ed student move-in with required one-on-one power. So those were our two additions in staff this past month. In our first presentation, Merritt's going to do an overview of MCAS scores, building off our recognition of our students who had perfect MCAS scores. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Merritt.
All right. So thank you for having me, and I wanted to start off by talking about the fact that this year we're experiencing a fair amount of change in terms of our assessment system at the state level. So please feel free to interrupt at any time if clarity is needed, but I wanted to give a little bit of background information. You'll also notice that some of the slides look a little bit different and have a student holding up a star. And so those are provided by the DESC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, who furnished us with some slides to be able to kind of share a consistent message around the entire state. So just for an overview, I'm going to talk about the major shifts in the MCAS, and then showcase a few of the results from the spring test, and just talk about how this informs our ability to plan at the district, the school, the grade, the classroom level. So here's the little guy with the slide, holding up the star. So about 20 years ago, Massachusetts launched the MCAS system. It was historic, for those of you that were in the state at the time or may have taken the test. It really did set a precedent that had, to some degree, a domino effect around the country with state testing. And so we find ourselves now in the process of re-norming that test and redesigning that test. We know a lot more about assessment theory, a lot more about the brain and how it learns and how to provide assessment. And more importantly, we know about where students need to be in terms of college and career readiness when they leave our schools. So with the new Next Generation MCAS, it does focus on critical thinking. It focuses not just on content, but how to apply that content, so it's trying to measure skill attainment, and then connections between reading and writing across the curriculum, so not just in English Language Arts. And it looks at, again, the readiness piece. We do administer it on the computer, so it's a computer-based assessment, and we just, for the very first time, provided the new Next Generation MCAS. They are calling the old MCAS the legacy MCAS, and so I'll give you the delineation of who took the legacy, who took the Next Generation MCAS. But for the past couple of decades, people are familiar with MCAS standards. So when you get a regular legacy MCAS report, it would either say that you're advanced, you're proficient, you need improvement, or you're in a warning status. And that's in regards to being able to demonstrate that you learned the content. With the new Next Generation MCAS, they have a slightly different breakdown. They have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and then not meeting expectations. And this nomenclature is held within the parent report that parents received a couple weeks ago, and gives you a little bit of a breakdown about the difference between those pieces. So to bump back to the earlier slide, when we talk about legacy, in terms of comparing ourselves to how we've done in years past or to other districts, we typically look at the combination of students that have reached proficiency and advanced, and we report out on that percentage. And with the new Next Generation MCAS, we'll do the same for meeting plus exceeding expectations, so those two groups brought together. So if you have a child or children in grades three through eight, last spring, they would have taken the Next Generation MCAS for English Language Arts and Math. If you have a child in fifth or eighth grade, they would have taken the old legacy MCAS for science, and then all of the high school tests are still legacy. So along with this new structure, the state is trying on a new way of reporting out to parents, and the parent reports are colorful and were sent out, and it, again, gives you that breakdown that I just mentioned. So the delineation between not meeting expectations or partially meeting expectations, and then that second kind of tier that we combine together, meeting expectations or exceeding, and it talks about the difference that a student might have. This is just a sample, so you can see the student's name is John Doe. And then at the bottom, it also talks about how John Doe performed compared to their school, their district, and their state. So for students in Carver, their score will be listed, and then school and district are often the same number because we have one school for each grade level, as opposed to having multiple elementary schools or multiple middle schools that are averaged together. And then it also provides the state average, which gives you a comparison to where your child falls based on the average student in that grade at the state. And then they also gave further breakdown for parents, where in math, they would show you the different domains that are measured. So this happens to be the measurement of an elementary school student, and it shows you that they got seven out of 10 questions correct on operations and algebraic thinking. It then goes down and gives you a breakdown for each of these content areas, and it gives you a website that students can go to, or parents can go to, so that they can see what types of questions their students were answering. So overall, about half of the students in the state were either meeting expectations or exceeding expectations, and that is a more firm or a stricter standard than we had with the old MCAS. So one of the predictions that we had is that parents might ask this question, and the department put out this slide. So why did my child score proficient on the older MCAS, the legacy MCAS, but only partially meeting expectations this year? So to answer that, this year, the assessment was more rigorous than the standards were for the proficient level. It doesn't necessarily mean that your student didn't learn as much. So Massachusetts educators were the ones that grouped together and set the new standards. There were a group that met over the summer, and the idea was to signal students readiness for the next grade level, and they helped to define that. They also looked closely at where students fall in each of those categories, and then tried to encourage parents, if they had some real concerns, to talk to their parent, their child's teacher. And then also, the biggest thing to remember is that this was the first year that they set these standards. So just like this occurred back in the late 1990s when they were first administering the MCAS, the first couple of years, it takes a while to wrinkle out the iron, to iron out the wrinkles, and make sure that the data is valid. And so it takes multiple measures and multiple times providing that. So these should not be compared to last year's scores, and just to keep in mind that moving forward, we'll have more years of this type of data. So as a quick graphic for that, again, provided from the state, this was the general projection of where students would fall, and it's pretty consistent with where they fell. You can see that yellow and green would be meeting expectations or exceeding expectations, and by and large, around the state in grades three through eight, about half of the students were in those two categories. So this is a slide that I've shown you often, but as a reminder, we have student data in the red here, and we tend to look at that data. Oftentimes, we're triangulating it, so we're not just looking at MCAS data, but we're looking at other assessments. And from there, we're able to look at our instructional priorities and provide coaching or professional development if needed. We can review programs and make sure that we have the right pieces in place, and then teachers do their work of implementing that in the classroom via instruction. We reassess, and then we look at the data over and over again. So this cycle continues. There's no set schedule to it, it depends on the assessment, but in terms of MCAS, we look at it over the course of a year, or two years, or three years, as the data becomes available. And ultimately, the prize that we are aiming for is increased student achievement. So now we're going to get into some Carver data, and I'm going to talk a little bit about how Carver did compared to the state, and then talk about growth and gap narrowing, and then a little bit of comparison data with local districts, and embedded with all of that are what supports parents can have in interpreting their child's results. So if we look at Carver, this is how we did with mathematics compared to the state. So you can see in grades three and five, we outperformed the state, and then again in grade 10, there's a large margin. So if we put that and drape it over the landscape of growth, there are two ways to look at this data, and I would say that working in conjunction with both of them gives you a clearer picture. So if we just look at performance, if we go back to this slide, we can say, oh, some grade levels did really well, some grade levels underperformed compared to the state. But the state came out several years ago, and we've talked about this before, and wanted to highlight growth, and said, you know, there are some years that the tests might be more rigorous, or some years where a group of students might perform better. So really, what we want to do is measure where the student was in the year prior, and then how much they were able to grow over the course of that year. And a lot of our accountability is based on those growth measures and our ability to narrow gaps for different subgroups. So if you look at this slide, you'll see that the information on the previous slide is still here. It shows third grade, 52% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectation. But if you look in the right-hand column for grades four through eight, it shows how much growth on average our students made. And as a state, we try to get to 50. So we say 50% is a year's worth of growth, or average growth. And why this is important is if you hone in on seventh grade, it looks like our seventh grade didn't perform as well because we had 33% that met or exceeded expectations, but if you actually bump over to the growth, you can see that they made more than the state average over the course of last year. So they were coming from an even lower place the year prior, and even though it looks like that two-thirds of them are not meeting or exceeding expectations, they made more than the average growth. Does that make sense? So it helps round out the picture in terms of where we're trying to bring students to. With English Language Arts, we have the same type of layout. You can see that in grades three and five and six and 10, we outperformed the state. And then again, you see the same growth layout. So in grades four, in grade five, in grade six, and then the aggregate of grades three through eight, if you average them out, we outperform the state growth.
So Meredith, if you, if you look at the bar graphs that you have for slide 13 and 15, the blue for the district, that's the students that were either exceeding or met, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is data, so if we look at it, if you look at the two graphs with ELA and math, besides sixth grade, where they sort of exceeded in ELA but fell a little short in math, the trends are exactly the same in each grade level.
Yeah.
You know, where we exceeded the state and where we fell short in the state in ELA and math are pretty similar.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's so many different ways to analyze this data. It's just data and cognitive ability, and there are so many other pieces that get involved in this, you know, that, I guess it depends on how you're looking at it, and what you want to look at makes a big difference in what you're going to find.
I appreciate that point, because we always talk about the fact that it's one snapshot of where the students are at in one day. And it's a great springboard for dialogue, but it has to be married with other data. You have to be...
But I think like you, and this was a conversation that we had, or at least I brought up when we met with the, when the representatives, that, you know, it took MCAS a good decade or so to get on track, and we, as a state, were top of the nation. or so to get on track, and we, as a state, were top of the nation. Yet we jumped ship from them immediately and went to Park, and now we're jumping back to them, and the state is making all these changes and putting all these expectations on districts. And if we're doing so great, what's the point? Because MCAS kind of had it together, and they kind of had formulating something, and now this new MCAS is more like a Park MCAS. So it's sort of a marriage of the two, and it's going to take them another, you know, five-plus years, as you said a little bit ago, to get back to where there's more validity to what they're actually trying to track and figure out.
Yep.
So personally, I support everything you've said, James, in terms of, you know, alter, we have to, we have to look at this data, we have to take into consideration, and we have to give it to teachers, and teachers have to analyze it and look at individual student scores. But especially with the total reset of the test itself, I don't think there's a point to making broad assumptions in any direction based on this, based on this one test on a total new reset. And even, there was a lot of discussion among superintendent groups about whether we were going to show growth data and whether we were going to show comparative data. And so our superintendent's group for South Shore that met last week, there was a mix on whether we were going to put that information out there, because even the growth data, you're comparing the growth against a different test.
Right.
You know, so everyone agreed they have to put the information out because the bottom line, it's information that every parent receives. So the school committee has to look at it, we have to talk about it, we have to have some conversation about it. It's all just, you know, how much, at this time, at this point, how much weight are we going to put into this data? But obviously, there's a real value to it, but there's some holes here too because the first year of the test, the growth data, you're comparing unlike things. So you're comparing students on the new next generation MCAS compared to how they either did on the Park, or in some districts, the old MCAS exam. So, you know, the probably most reliable numbers, and I don't say this only because they were our strongest, the most reliable numbers is 10th grade, because 10th grade is the legacy MCAS exam that students have been taking for many, many years, and the comparison data is legitimate there in terms of, because it's been normalized, and they're comparing their growth over time against other kids who took the eighth grade MCAS. And, you know, that, in terms of reliability and validity of data right now, I'd say the most reliable and valid data is the 10th grade scores. That's just, that's just my opinion. Sorry, we digress, Meredith, from your.
No.
Whenever you, whenever you tend to look at those 10th grade scores, they always seem to make that jump, that leap to where you didn't think it was going to go, but they generally do, you know? But this is a whole different test for those kids too that we've been through before. Like, you guys, you guys would lose your mind taking this because there's multiple choice where four out of the five could be, are the correct answer, or you've got to, they've, they've got a, it's a whole technological new world where they're dragging answers from there to there, and they're reading online and then typing online at the same time, and just those technological changes enough throw, when you're talking about third graders taking a test like that, you know, they, there's, there's so much practice that needs to happen before that truly becomes something that's all about the content and not about the practice.
Meredith, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe that the students who took the paper-based test were more successful.
In some grade levels and some content areas. So English, Language Arts, particularly, particularly third and fourth grade, that they noticed a slight swell. So they, they had to change the way that they took the raw data and were able to equate a mean scaled score for those taking the computer-based test, because they needed to find a way to level.
That's not an option this year, though. So on your test report, it says whether you took the computer-based test or the paper-based test.
Right, so yes.
We took computer-based in Carver.
And we've done computer-based for the past several years, including.
Yeah, I mean, we re-voted, right.
But yes, so last year, it was an option in particular grade levels, but the state has dictated what grade levels to bring onboard, and it's a three-year process. And then this upcoming year, Science in grades five through eight will be computer-based as well. So, all right, thank you for that. We also, in regards to growth, look at gap narrowing, and in terms of mathematics, we look at some of our student subgroups. So students with disabilities outperformed the state in terms of their growth, and same with economically disadvantaged students and our high-need students. And that's in math. When you look at English, Language Arts, again, as an aggregate, we outperformed in all those areas, and we're on par with all students with the state growth. So I'm going to move into some comparison data, and like Mr. Neef mentioned, this was a discussion, and people are kind of all over the place in terms of whether they were going to provide this. So to just highlight what James said, it's true that we can look at this, we can see how we brush up against other districts, but the reality is, this is the very first time that any of this data is being looked at. So it's very much like standing on Jell-O, and we need to make sure that we move forward cautiously. So with fifth grade, you can see some different local districts. The state will always appear in red, and Carver will appear in green.
Meredith, I don't know if you just want to touch on why we chose fifth, eighth, and 10th grade as the comparison.
Yes, thank you. So I'm not going through all of the different grade levels, but we figured since fifth grade is the exit point for the elementary school, eighth grade is the exit point for the middle school, and 10th grade is the last time that students take the test at the high school level, that those seemed like clear and logical delineations.
And I think historically, that's what the district, the school committee has looked at, is the comparison data at five, eight, and 10.
Yeah. So this is for English, Language Arts, and then math, again, Carver in green, and the state average in red, and then science. And then if I move on to eighth grade, so for the exit area of middle school, this is English, Language Arts, and math, and science. And then if I move into high school, English, Language Arts, and math, and science. So the biggest claim, and this goes back to the discussion that we had, is that the results do not mean that students learned less. In terms, if you notice any slide with your own children, it's being measured in a different way. So James gave the example that sometimes there might be five options on a multiple-choice question, and four of them may be correct, and students are asked to select multiple answers if they believe that there are multiple correct answers, which again, is a whole different shift in the way that students, yes, are being.
It's not more process of elimination.
Right. Take your best guess on those two, right? 2017 is a baseline year. It's as much like MCAS when it debuted in 98. Massachusetts educators are the ones that set the standards, and they raised them in order to make sure that our students will be college and career-ready. I think a lot of that is based on the data of how many of our students go off and need remedial courses in a high, in college settings, or the completion rate in terms of community college and four-year colleges. So they use that data. One thing that I will say is I didn't show this slide, but the state did look at comparing our data to how Massachusetts does on worldwide assessments like the NAEP. So we pay money in Massachusetts to enter the NAEP assessment, not with the rest of the United States, but as our own country. So Massachusetts wants to be compared at kind of the, the country level, and we do very well. Oftentimes, we are in, you know, the top five in the different areas. Oftentimes, we're first in the world. And so they used that NAEP information to help with standard setting for our MCAS. It says in some grades and subjects, the percent of students meeting expectations will likely be similar to the percent that were proficient in years past, and at other grades, it might be slightly lower. And then they talk about just the way that the panels went through the progression of learning, and they wanted to make sure that they dismissed the notion that there were some years that had a harder test. So it used to be that fourth and eighth grade tests seemed to be the hardest in English, Language Arts, and they're trying to make a more level playing field so that growth is a little bit easier to project from grade to grade. So as James mentioned, looking beyond the scores, these scores can identify where area, or the areas where students might need academic supports, but it has nothing to do with the non-academic barriers to learning. So it doesn't look at poverty, it doesn't look at multiculturalism, it doesn't look at time-on-task, student suspensions, homelessness, any other factors, or looking at safe schools for vulnerable students like recent immigrants or the LGBTQ students. And so we go back to that whole notion of looking at this data in a logical or in a thoughtful way and recognizing that it's one piece of a pie. And it's much more important to look at that data as a springboard to answer questions, but to dive into assessments that we use on a regular basis. So common assessments at the middle-high school level, or end-of-unit assessments that we have in reading and math, and progress monitoring and the anecdotal data that, that teachers have on their students when working with them on a daily basis. So this data can inform that cycle, but again, it's going to take multiple years to be able to do that. We need to triangulate the data, and then we continue to have discussions about making sure that our programs, in terms of the content delivered and the way that we're teaching, aligns well with the skills necessary for students to be successful when they leave Carver schools. Brad, did I keep it under two and a half hours?
Right about.
What questions does the committee have?
Could you just take a look at slide, I think it was 27 or 28?
If you can tell me what was on it, yes.
Yeah, is it eighth grade science?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, the presentation was great. But I think, I think all of this, you can look at them and kind of tell a story depending on where you want to go with the story, right? So looking at some of the facts, what happens, and I'm just going to use this one as an example, so obviously, this is a troubling statistic. What do, how does the educators take that data and say, how, year over year, are we going to make sure that this type of thing doesn't happen again? What are we going to change?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious how that works.
So that's a great question. So there is a lot of work that has been happening in the Science Department. The first thing is our Science Department Chair disaggregated this data and looked at the different classes that took the assessment to see if there was any discrepancy. And we had one class with inconsistent staffing over the course of the year, teacher-lab substitutes came on, that sort of thing. And so there was a noticeable difference between that and having a consistent teacher that knew the standards and that sort of thing over the course of the year. Additionally, we have adopted a new science curriculum called the CPUP curriculum. We've talked about it and have been implementing new units each year, and so those are aligned with the new science frameworks, and science is in the process of developing a next-generation MCAS as well that aligns with those. So we're looking at those pieces as well. And then at the school level, the department chair really does engage middle school staff in talking about how this assessment plays out. I will say that science is a little bit different than math and English, Language Arts, because those two assessments occur each year, and you're continually using the skills that you learn in every new thing that you're being required to do. So to give you an example, third grade may assess a student's ability to do multiplication, but in sixth grade, you're going to need multiplication as well, and in seventh grade, and in eighth grade. And so students have exposure to that skill over and over and over and over again. And there's a big push around automaticity and fluency because it's used so much. Science is much more kind of siloed, for lack of a better term. And so a student might have an experience in their integrated science class, which means that they're going to learn life science, earth and space science, and physical science each year. But it's based on particular concepts, and it might be that they have a question on their eighth grade test that they haven't learned about since the beginning of their sixth grade year. And so we've been working and talking about what it means to kind of get to those deeper learning experiences so that students can retain some of that and carry it over from year to year. But it's much more difficult to do when things tend to be more unitized like that. So we don't give a science MCAS in each grade. We give it in fifth and eighth, and then again, in high school.
But we feel confident that we're able to give the kids in Carver the same type of learning in the sciences that these other districts are getting.
It's one of the things that we're looking at, but we're also looking at how staffing and programming and supplies and those sort of things impact that. So as we move into the budget year, those are things that the department chair continually looks at and how to make sure that we have the resources necessary to be able to teach those.
Yeah, because when it comes to budgeting and being able to say what our needs are, we want to be able to tell a story.
Right.
And that, this is the story.
Yes.
Thanks.
I think, Andrew, though, you, you kind of hit it on the head that, that, you know, there was a lot of push against Park and against Common Core, but standardized testing has been around forever, you know, Stanford tests and this stuff, we took way back in the day. It's, the difference is now with the unions and with the districts, it's how it's weighted and how it's used, and what they do with that data, and how that data is interpreted. So you're, that's the most important part is what you're talking about. Great, we've got this. What is the district, do we do with it? How do we use it is probably the most relevant part. And, and from their perspective, what does the state want to do with it, and how are they going to use it is another window to look at it too, and what their expectations are with it. But it's not going away. It's not like standardized testing isn't going to exist. So the more we can find something that we stick with and get a better grasp on how to use it more properly, the better off we're all going to be with whatever it is that we are using.
And the reality is, these students taking this test will then take the ninth grade science, and when you look at ninth grade science, I know it says 10th up here, but they actually take the test in ninth grade, they're at 74% proficient in advanced. So it's one of those, those pieces that we do try to look at. So they might take the physics MCAS, and they have physics all year long as ninth graders. So they are going to perform better because they're not taking three years' worth of instruction and trying to recall all of that.
And it doesn't have to be 10th grade, it just has to be done by 10th grade? Is that how it looks?
Yeah, so when you, when you look at the 10th grade science, it's always tough to even look at the comparisons because you don't, we don't know what test those districts took. Most districts take biology as their graduation test. We made a decision to take physics. So there are, there are districts that take physics, but biology is the most common exam tested for, for science. So we don't even know what Pembroke took. Yeah, my, my, I don't know, I shouldn't speak of what exam they took, but the intro to physics is just a decision we made as a district to do it in ninth grade and have students, have students have that opportunity in ninth grade to pass the test and have it over with and not have to take three MCAS for graduation requirements in the 10th grade year. It also went with, we went with a science philosophy of physics first, so that everybody takes physics in ninth grade, then biology, then chemistry. And not all districts do that. So there are some districts where these kids take the biology, some districts split it. They give biology to their ninth graders in the honors level. So it's, it varies. So the 10th, the 10th grade science is the most uneven comparison in terms, because districts have options on what they can do. There are districts that give chemistry, not a lot. And they, there's actually, they can also give a technology exam. So there's a technology, so there's, in science, there's four exams you can give. And to answer your question, James, they have to complete one of those exams before the end of their 10th grade year. And the four exams are chemistry, biology, physics, and a technology exam.
Any other questions at all?
Very much.
Thank you.
It's very informative. So moving on to a somewhat lengthy topic, I believe.
Yeah, enrollment. Meredith, I think the best slide to look at first would be the one that says 10-year review.
10-year review, yeah.
Yeah. So if we can pull up the 10-year review document as I, as I talk about it. Last month, we looked at our October 1 enrollment as a district. And as a reminder, our enrollment was down by 52 students as compared to 2016. At that time, we discussed to have a full understanding of our decline over the last few years, we needed to look at where these students were attending school or if they had moved out of town. So we're going to look at three documents here. One is a list of students who live in Carver but are being educated in another way. One is a 10-year review of the numbers, which we just put up, of students who live in Carver but are being educated another way, and if there is an exit survey that we've developed. Just some general key points from, from this data is, in 2017, we had 17 additional students who live in Carver but are seeking educational alternatives. So in 2016, we had 220 students who did this. This past year, we have 237. This represents 32% of our decrease in enrollment. So we had a decrease in enrollment of 52 kids. 17 of those kids still live here in Carver, but they've decided to go to a private school, a charter school, an online academy, homeschooling, there's a bunch of options they have. They, 17 of our students who. They, 17 of our students who went to school here last year and still live in Carver selected one of those options. But that, that means on the other side that 35 of those students of the 52 we lost were just demographic changes, students moving out of town or changes in total population. So, we are concerned about our decline in enrollment, but the reality is still 2/3 of that decrease in enrollment is just based on demographics and people moving. But we, I still want to look at that 17 or those students who are making decisions to attend educational alternatives. And this chart actually, I think, is the most interesting, well, the most, the thing that we have to be concerned about or discuss at least is, I actually went back over time and, I should say, I, so Anne Marie went back over time and put this data together for me. And, and if you go back 10 years, in 2008, 2009, 8.7, see that column that says percentage not in Cal Republic schools? In 2009, 8.7% of our students chose an educational alternative, private school. We've always had kids go to private school. We've always had kids go to voc schools. We've always had kids homeschool. So, it, but 10 years ago, that was only 8.7% of the kids who lived in Carver. This data tracks that over time. To this year, we're up to 12.8. So, over that 10-year period, we've gone from 8.7% of our students choosing an educational alternative to 12.8% of our students choosing an educational alternative. Obviously, that's a trend we want to turn around. We don't want to see that growth of 4% over 10 years. We don't want to be sitting here 10 years from today saying that now we have 17 or 18% of the kids who live in Carver choosing an educational alternative. We want to try to, you know, quell that growth a little bit. And down below, it also just lists where the students are attending. You know, the interesting thing looking at this is, you know, homeschool is an interesting number. You know, 10 years ago, we had 29 kids in the district who were homeschooled. This year, we have 28.
It seems virtuels and charters are the only two that...
So, where, where we've seen our change, and that's, you've summarized my point, is that we've seen our change in virtuels and charters. So, we've all, you know, kids attending Voc's and Aggies, 97, 104, 91, 99, 94, 96, 95, 95. We're going to have 20, 25 kids from this district attend Old Colony Vocational Regional. I think that's an appropriate educational choice for those students. I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, complain about that. That is, that's something that's been that way for 10 years and probably if we looked at the district, probably for 30 years. And same with, you know, there's always going to be people who choose to go to a private school, whether it be a Catholic public school because that's where the rest of their family went, or whether it be a private academy like a Tabor Academy or Milton Academy because they have that opportunity and they decide to take it. Again, that number stayed pretty consistent. It's actually gone down a little bit.
Yeah.
In terms of the number of students who are choosing to do that. It really is the charter schools and the virtual academies. Now, the virtual academies are a little bit of a new phenomenon. So, if you scroll down a little bit, Meredith, you know, Mass Virtual Academy Greenfield opened in 2010 and Techer Academy, I don't believe, opened until 2014. So, those, and Techer Academy has become fairly popular in terms of a, a virtual online choice. So, we've seen that, a little bit of that growth. Now, some of those virtual academies, there's actually a direct tie to our number of homeschooled students. So, if you look last year, we had 40 kids at homeschool. It went down to 28 because some of those homeschool kids just went to virtual academies. And I think at the high school level, what's happening is, it's, it's difficult to homeschool at any level. I think people will find it particularly challenged once to homeschool at the high school level because you just get into, you know, no, no one's an expert in, very few people are an expert in chemistry and physics and a foreign language and, and all the things they need to be an expert in to homeschool at that level. And a lot of times homeschooling, no way am I a master, when I call myself an expert in homeschooling, but I think most of, a lot of times when those students got to the high school level, they either worked together, there were consortiums available, there were options for them to do that, but the best option right now is become the virtual academies. So, these virtual academies coming online the last couple of years have had a shift for some of our homeschool students into that. We also, it's also just interesting things happen. Emery, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but believe the number's two. We had two students, two of those 10 moved into Carver over the summer, were attending the virtual, were living in a different town, attending the virtual academy, moved to Carver and attended the virtual academy. They were never students here, they're, but they moved, they live here now and now they're attending the virtual academy. And we only became aware of that when we got the reports from the sending schools. So, sending school, any, any school in Massachusetts has to send us a list of kids who live in our town but attend their school. So, we found out about those two kids through that process. So, we, we didn't even know they had moved into Carver, but they were already attending the virtual academy. So, they just, they just stayed there. The negative piece about the virtual academy, unfortunately, the financial impacts are in charter schools and the virtual academies. The virtual academies are considered charter schools. They're figured into our charter school number. So, the thing that has, students choosing to go to a, to Coyle Cassidy does not have a financial impact on the district. Students choosing to homeschool don't have a financial impact on the district. Students attending a charter school or a virtual academy does have a financial impact on the district.
So, that's multiplied in six years, five, over five times.
Yeah. And we, so we've seen that. We've seen that in terms of our charter assessment, our charter school assessment. So, that, it has to be an area of concern that we have to look at and, and, and take some steps to try to find out why these students are making these decisions and then try to market ourselves to have students stay within the district. And then it also impacts the decisions we make as a school district and as a town in terms of budget and facilities and, and all those types of things because those, you know, we, we don't know if those, those are factors yet in terms of decisions that, that students are making. Meredith, just because I put the other list, we can throw it up, it just shows where students actually are, but really, all the information we need is really on this chart. We don't necessarily need the other chart, but since it's in the background, we can show everybody the other chart.
Now, Scott, if you're homeschooled, you can participate in extracurriculars at Carver, correct? If you are part of the virtual academy, you cannot.
Correct. So, if you attend, if you attend a virtual, if you're a charter school student, you can only access the resources of that charter school. So, you cannot participate in...
And the same is true of the virtual...
Same, same true with virtual academies, same true with the vocationals. So, if you're at Norfolk Aggie and they don't have basketball, you can't play on our basketball team. Same with, actually, same, the only ones who can are school choice kids. So, kids with school choice into our district can play here and homeschool, homeschool kids. And that is going to become an issue, not an issue, but our first generation of homeschooled students are in the sixth grade. So, I mean, sorry, our first generation of school choice students are in the sixth grade. Because remember, we, we've only been school choice for kindergarten, but those, once they enroll school choice, they can stay. We've had families who've decided to stay. So, we have sixth graders now at the middle high school who are school choice students who live in Plymouth. Now, we're not, currently, we're not school choice for any other grade, but since they started here in kindergarten, they're allowed to stay. In a couple of years, those students will be able to play on our sports teams and, and do those types of things. So, what, you know, what are we going to do with this? There's two things we're looking to do is, first, we are looking to really start an exit survey. So, we're going to begin asking every student who leaves the district to complete a survey just to give us some information on why they're making that decision. There's a copy of the exit survey in your packet, in your background. Not looking necessarily for school to be approval of the survey, but I wanted you to know that after this meeting, our intention is to start to give this survey to every student who leaves the district. Now, it might be hard to collect some of that data because, and you can put, Meredith, you can put the survey up, it's linked in there as well. The reality is, some students, the only way we find out they're leaving the district is we get a request from another school to send their information. And they don't necessarily, you don't have to walk in the door to leave the district. Most students, while we're in school, it was linked in the background, Meredith, it was just called exit survey, there it is, okay. Most students, when they leave school during the school year, come in. It's this movement that happens over the summer.
Yeah.
So, the movement happens over the summer, they tend not to come in. So, obviously, if the student comes in, we're going to actually ask them to complete the survey in hand. If they don't come in, then we're going to, we're going to email the survey to them, a link to the survey in drive. If they don't complete the survey that way, we're going to follow up with a phone call and say, do you mind just giving us this information? We're just trying to collect data. We're trying to learn about ourselves, find out why, what's going into your decision to leave the district. And then, you know, based on that, hopefully, use that data to kind of inform some decisions that we're making. The other thing that we're looking to do is, we're looking to begin basically a marketing campaign. We're feeling like we'd be, we have to begin to market ourselves in terms of, you know, what the great things that are going on within the school district. And, and as of right now, there's three things we're talking about in terms of marketing. We're in the, we're in the process of, we have a, put a marketing team together, we're in the process of, we're going to create a video, I'm going to try to do a three to five-minute video selling the school district, promoting the school district that we can post out on, you know, any kind of social media, on the school website, et cetera. We're looking to do a one-page, like tri-fold pamphlet for each school campus, which we just have information about things, you know, resources available, great things going on at the school that we could give to families that are considering to come into town or just have available to put out in the community. And the third thing we're looking at doing is, we're looking to just, on a more regular basis, put information out to the community of all the great things that are going on in the school. You know, there are newsletters or information that goes out via the schools. We want to make a centralized platform. And we're looking at something that Plymouth does. Plymouth actually has, as part of their budget, they have a publicity coordinator. That's the person's job. So, that's, that's nice that they are able to fit that within their budget and obviously a much larger school district. But really, that person's job is to market the Plymouth Public Schools. And I got to know that person actually through the Dream Ride experience because we, I partnered with Gary Messis, the superintendent of Plymouth Schools. Their publicity coordinator came on the trip because she was publicizing the trip. So, we got to meet her and she's, she's actually going to come over and meet with us next week and give us some ideas of what they're doing for marketing. And one of the things that they're doing is they have a, they have a weekly blast from the superintendent that's really created by the publicity coordinator that just highlights all the great things that happened in the district during that week. And parents can sign up for it, but it also goes on their social media pages and it's, we've seen copies of it. It's just, it's well done. It's adding some nice visuals, some, it's, it's more visual than words. It's, I think it's, the reality of today's society is we're shifting to a digital society where we don't, that's not that we don't want to get the Ruby's newsletter, that's more, that's more, more direct language, you know, but it's, it's very visual, it's very highlights, very exciting splashes of the things happening within the schools. And would it be real, is it realistic for us to create something like that on a weekly basis based on the fact that we don't have someone that that's their job to do that? It might be hard, but we were thinking maybe on a monthly basis if we could create that kind of, our marketing and media, just celebrating, there's great things that are happening here and students can be really successful here and they're going to have great opportunities here. And hopefully, that will help maintain some things within the school district. I think the last thing which is that, we don't, obviously, we're not going to make this decision tonight, I don't think we have to go into a long discussion, but I always want to put it out there. I also think we have to start considering whether we're going to open up school choice beyond kindergarten. You know, the, the reality is, it's more schools on the South Shore are going school choice. As more schools go school choice, that gives other schools more options. And school choice is revenue positive for us. If we bring students in, that can help offset some, some of the monies for students that we're losing. You know, at the elementary school, as I said, this will be a separate discussion, but at the elementary school, we're probably not prepared to increase our school choice enrollment just based on the size of the school and the number of kids enrolled and fitting students into the new school. Right now, we do have space at the high, middle high school level that we could take some students in at each grade level. So, you know, if, it's something the committee's going to have to consider. So, I think as we look in, as we get to the fall and we look at school choice options, I think that's something we're going to have to, the committee's going to have to consider in terms of trying to increase some of our enrollment and bring some more money to counteract the money we're losing to students who are attending charter schools and virtual academies. Doesn't mean we have to, the committee could clearly decide to not go in that direction. And we're hoping that through our marketing campaign, through gathering information from students, we can do some things to improve retention. And I guess, you know, my wife often criticizes me saying that I like to say things multiple times, so I know I've already said this, but I'll say it again, that I still want to point out that, you know, I think there was a sense, there's a little bit of a sense, boy, we lost a lot of students over the last couple of years. And when you look at the numbers, it's actually fairly consistent. We, we lost more, Meredith, if you go back to that original chart, we lost more last year than we had the two previous years, but if you look over the time, if you look at the number, you know, even back nine years ago, we lost 54 students. Next year, we lost 66. Next year, we lost 33. So, 52 isn't an outrageous number of students that we've lost. And the reality is, 2/3 of those were demographic. People moved. Now, that's a, I'm not, they can just check on the exit form, we're moving. And maybe they're going to check the reasons why they're moving. Maybe they'll tie that directly to education, maybe they won't. And maybe they'll just say, my job changed, I'm moving. So, it is still, there is still part of it, it's just the reality of the demographic, demographic shifts in terms of the size of, or the numbers of families with kids in Carver.
So, when would that school choice discussion be part of our...
In the spring. And we'd have to look at it, obviously, if we were going to build it into part of our budget discussion. You know, technically, I believe you have to decide by May, by June 1st, so, but usually it's the May meeting, it's usually on the agenda for the May meeting. We have to declare by June 1st. You'd want to do that in advance of that because obviously you want to compete for that a little bit.
Could we, could we have, like, when we have that discussion, maybe a, like, a look at all sides, like what are the, what the positives could be, but what else are the negatives could be there?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. So, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there tonight to say that, that as we look at enrollment issues, I think we have to look at all aspects of that. And, and the district has been pretty consistent in saying school choice only for kindergarten because, and the reality, we were doing that because Plymouth didn't have full-day kindergarten. And we were getting a group, it was, it was a perfect storm for us in terms of all positive. You know, we'd enroll 15 kids from Plymouth or 10 to 15 kids from Plymouth who went back in first grade. And so, every year, we were getting that straight revenue source from those 10, 15 kids and most of them weren't staying in the district. I said, some of them have. We have, I believe, one or two sixth graders who started in kindergarten, now they're in sixth grade, but the majority of those students were going back to Plymouth. But that's dried up a little bit because Plymouth started with full-day kindergarten last year. So, this year, we have a total of four school choice students in kindergarten. I'm looking, five. So, you know, so our sources dried up there a little bit in terms of what the resources we're bringing in through school choice.
Any other questions on that at all?
I just have a question about the exit survey. Are you going to create one for parents, too?
This, I would expect parents to create...
It is a parent.
This is the parent, I would expect the parents to be the person filling this out in coordination with their child.
Okay.
That'd be my thought.
Yeah. So, this would be, what, so if the pair, if the parents came in to withdraw them, we'd be asking the parents to complete the survey, not the kids.
Is that something that if they're not, though, that you would mail to them possibly?
Yeah, we're going to try to get options. So, it would be, like I said, in-person, email with a link, still not completed, phone call, what can we do to get you to complete this? If the answer is mail it to me, we'll mail it to them. I think we'll probably be more successful with the email and the link.
Email, yeah.
Than we will with the mail.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then, or we just might say, can you ask, well, I can ask you these questions, I'm going to, so what, if it's the guidance council who calls, I'm going to have the survey with you and ask them the questions and see if they, we want to give you the answer and say, I'm just going to fill this out.
Well, people tend to say whatever they want on the internet these days, too, so maybe we'll get more honest answers that way.
Yeah, so, we'll see, we'll, we'll see, we'll see where that goes. So, we're just trying to get, gather some information as to why these students are leaving.
On the video or whatever you're going to, the recruitment tool?
Yeah.
Go to the kids. The kids...
Yeah, absolutely.
Use kids and go to the variety of different groups of kids and basically funnel in their information because kids recruit kids. So kids will know ways to reach kids that we don't know. You know, and I think that's definitely the best way to go about it.
Absolutely, I agree 100%.
Yeah, I mean, do you do the same thing with the, what are you saying? Like, you know, you started Crusade Excellence, but like, you could solicit some of the student groups? I don't know how many of them do reports, I mean, I know sometimes they come in and present to us, but did they do that within school, at a grade level or anything like that? Because clearly they would know, you know, what projects or whatever the kids are working on that could be shareable and exciting, and those types of things.
Absolutely.
I don't know how it works there, so.
Right. So no, I mean, in terms of, I mean, through Crusade of Pride, or through different assemblies, the teachers, the kids, the administration definitely knows the exciting things happening in the school for us to highlight, and those are the people we're going to have to go to, to do those pieces, to put those celebrations in. And that's the idea, is that if we did some sort of a monthly blast that was going to go out of all of the great things that happen in the district, that in my mind, that's going to be, it might be someone in my office or myself putting it together, but that, all that information is going to come from students and teachers. That's where we're going to get that information, in terms of what we're going to highlight, what we're going to celebrate.
Thank you. Sounds great.
Yes, I'd like to just, I would like to say on, let me do second, the extra surveys back, I'd like to have a, a report.
Oh, absolutely, we could share some data on what, we could take a year's worth of exit surveys and just report out what people said, that makes sense. You know, I think we'd want to have, it might be, might be realistic of something to do next fall, versus where we have, if we can get 30 or 40 of them complete, we don't want to, we don't want to look at five people's surveys. And the reality is, there's just less movement during the school year, and the majority of this happens during the, during the summertime. So, but absolutely, I think, it would be my intention to report out some of that information. All right, ready to move on?
Moving on to budget?
All right, preliminary budget, Brad. Brad's going to take out his items of preliminary budget and tenure capital plan, but I'm sure I'll have some things to throw in.
All right, so I just want to go over FY19, this is obviously very, very, very preliminary, so I don't want you to go away, thinking that this is all finalized, this is just where we are right now. So slide two, just a timeline for you guys, we're going to finalize budgets with department heads in December, in January school committee meeting, I will look to be putting a projected level service budget on to you guys. Obviously, though, the big key is all collective bargaining associations are being negotiated right now, with departing agreements. February, March, we're going to the public hearing, school committee approval, and the meeting with the finance committee, and April is town meeting. So the FY19 forecast, at the top you have FY19 town approved budget number, this number did increase a little bit based on a DUR recap sheet that they had, I know originally we were looking at a 1.7% increase, if you do the math and follow along, it actually jumped up to 2.1, and that was shared between the town and school into the 70-30 formula, and that's the kick out of it.
That's better.
The board of, the board of parliament has approved that number, as right now is the preliminary budget forecast.
Have, is that what you said?
They have.
So the next one is known expense increases, so these are numbers that we have that are concrete, that we know, I wouldn't say concrete, but very good estimates and some concrete. So the first one is Plymouth County Retirement Board, that number is going up just over $52,000. In future years, that actually flatlines. So right now, we have, I think, a three-year estimate over the course of what that actually number is going to be, it's an estimate, it's actually a hard in writing number, that flatlines out, so we won't be getting hit with the $75,000, $50,000 increases from year to year, that levels out. Basically, what the majority of that increase was, was their ability to try to fund OPEB. They wanted to hit their dollar amount, so that's why they made a couple of big adjustments over the last couple of years. Vehicle, vehicle fuel is projected right now, it's gone up a little bit in this current budget, so just to put a conservative number on there, increasing that by just under $13,000. Workers' cop insurance, this again is just an estimate based on what last year's increase was, and property liability, this is a hard number to put a cap on. Last year it went up 13% in FY18, I'm putting a 25% increase based on the new building coming online, we should have more definitive numbers in the next couple of months, I know Maya wants to come in and take a look at the actual facility. But based on a 13% jump in FY18, I think 25 is a fair estimate, it could go up to 30, it could go down a little bit, it really depends on how they view the building. And also, I have not met with Dave to review the facilities budget, but that's, again, expecting, we're going to increase every facilities line in the elementary school based on their, their basic requirements, what the building's going to need. Expected increases. So gas and electric, last year, we were actually able to lock in for 48 months, a 8.7% decrease in electric from what was, from the previous FY17, so we're actually getting that savings right now. With the new boilers coming online, and the quotes I've been getting for natural gas, they've actually been coming in roughly 13% below what we're paying right now per dec of therm. Again, that's quotes right now, that may go up and may go down a little bit when we finally lock in, but that's another reassurance that we're going to have, a savings per therm on that dollar line. Again, throw that in addition with what the new boiler efficiency is going to be, and I think we're going to be safe actually just flatlining all of our utilities across the board, so that's going to be huge. I'll let you guys know as soon as we lock in to have better estimates, but what I want to do is, I want to take the savings that we're projecting from the natural gas things this year, and I want to move that into electric and for the elementary school, excuse me, based on, we know there's going to be more electricity used at the elementary school, how much, until it's online, everything, I've heard it's going to double, I've heard it's going to triple, I've heard it's going to be the same, until you go through the full year of seeing what's actually plugged in and what's used, you really don't know.
I mean, technically, we're running two buildings right now with it that way, right? Because all the electricity, it's not much for the.
There's a very limited electricity at the, at the, front building.
Yeah, yeah. The outage is going to skyrocket.
The old building doesn't even have the capacity to manage some of the electricity. Maybe that has been a problem in the past.
Probably blown a fuse, probably.
Exactly.
I mean, I know, I know originally it was said, I think it was the front building originally only had like 220 service like you'd have in your house. So, the school, the new school is going to have better service, so you would think it's the same number of people, but it's not, and it's actually going to be more, a little bit more devices probably.
More money, too.
And it's going to be, there's just going to be more electricity there, it's going to be more available for people to access and use.
So right now, that's the plan, and the town did set up a revolving account that we can use through free cash last year, that, to my knowledge, I don't know if the town's going to use it, but we're not looking like we're going to have to.
For utilities, you mean?
For utilities, yeah, yep. So if there is an overage next year with the projected savings, we can always go after that account and utilize that money. Health insurance, this number is a, looking to go up by just under $5,000, this is based on a GIC3, a 10% increase on what the plan dollar amounts are right now, and it's based on November's enrollment that I currently have. I have received a few emails about people questioning whether or not they're going to drop it or not, based on the move to GIC3, so if we do have that, we'll actually see a little bit of a larger savings on this. But what this is, is it's also covering, I want to say roughly $80,000 of the mitigation fund. I'm still, we're still working with the town to see how that mitigation fund is going to be actually funded, but right now, the thought process behind it was, the savings that the school and town see would be divided out between each one depending on the participants, and we're on the hook for between 70% to 75% of that right now, the school and rollies. So we would have to kick that back into the actual mitigation fund. To be determined, it's still in the works right now, but that includes that number in there.
It does include that.
It does include that.
So if we actually, if we were to take that off, we would actually say, let's just say that number is 75,000, we'd actually see a savings on our health insurance line by 70,000, rather than the $5,000 increase. Our district tuitions, this is a big one. So, right now, we've had a few changes this current year, that in July, we get a letter from PAC Academy, for example, that tuitions went from $36,000, or actually $35,000, up to 45, and that was per student, we had, roughly right now, I think we have four students out on that, so that, just currently this year, was $40,000 that we have to make up, which we'll talk about the next meeting, how town set up that special ed reserve account, we'll be able to utilize that for this money, but the year after we own it, so that's part of this. All tuitions across the board pretty much went up roughly 5%. Again, we'll discuss that at the next meeting. But the two key things here are, we had two move-ins currently this year, that for this school year, how, how special it works is, there's a difference between char, char schools, collaborations, and private schools. The private schools, if they move in after April, so if they had moved in after April of, April 1st, April 2nd of 2017, we would not be fiscally responsible for them until actually FY19. So they moved in this current year, we're not fiscally responsible until the next school year. And these are cost shares right now, so there's two students that we had move in that are cost shares due to parental conditions, and that is the majority of that money that will be coming online for us, and we have cost shares of that next year. Needed increases, as you guys know, I know Michelle gave a presentation last time, we are most likely going to need a 1.0 FTE for ESL teacher, and that includes translation services in there. The Carver Elementary School and Middle High School supplies lines, that is bringing them up, bringing them up from what we reduced in FY17, excuse me, in FY18, back to FY17's original budget figures, that's the goal with those two. And district wide tech fixes, this is kind of my favorite one, because right when I started, I know I got hit with a bunch of questions on, who pays for this, who's going to pay for that? What's been happening is, let's say the middle high school wants to purchase a new projector for a room, they buy the projector, but they also include in that is the wiring needed for it, hiring the electrician, and it's a, you pay the bill, you pay the bill, back and forth, who really where does it reside? So I want to have, is I want to have a direct dollar amount allocated for that, that encompasses all of that, so it's not a, it's your budget, your budget, this is the number, this is what we have to work with, and we'll work it out case by case.
So that's not something that's, you're talking about the tech consolidation, that's not something that's being decided where?
No, this is, this is, this actually is just for general fixes. Yep, nothing to do with tech consolidation at all. It's just if you had a laptop in your room, you were getting it upgraded, if we had the money available for die mid-year, there's a lot more cost than just the actual projector itself, and this would be the money that we had to go for that, there's really no money allocated for that, those items right now.
So how did you come up with that figure?
Just rough estimate on what we spent last year.
Average.
Yep, there's really no good average on it, because I think from year to year, it's been your budget, your budget, your budget. I think that's a good starting point, to go from there. And that gives us our totals of 490 in new money, subtract out 86 in known increases, subtract out 313 in expected increases, needed increases minus the 130, and that gives us a starting working balance before anything else is included, we are just, say, $38,000 To summarize, the last one here, a few of these items may change to free up additional funds, we could have someone move out for our tuitions, that would free up money in that, salary increases, like I said, are not included in that, this is a preliminary overview, we don't want to hit the panic button yet, because we're still very early, and the level of service budget presentation will be in January.
That 0.4% increase is helpful, though.
Yeah, definitely, it would have been, it would have been 100 grand.
If I remember the numbers we were talking about preliminary before, it was not as inviting as that, and we're not there, there's still a lot to go.
To go from 1.7 to 2.1, the town side helps.
And it's nice, because that, that, actually, where that number hit is in the tax base, so that's reoccurring growth year after year after year.
Like I said, this is just the very beginning process, and we'll come back in January with a full level, you know, our first budget presentation to the committee will be a level service of what the cost will be to maintain all levels of services that we currently have.
And also have better health insurance numbers, too, as that one goes on.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's still some variables in that presentation, things could change in a positive way. Any other questions on budget presentation?
Well, we kind of worried it that it could change in a positive way, is there any could change in a negative way?
Yeah, we could have another district tuition movement.
Right, the biggest, the biggest change in a negative way would be another district movement.
Exactly.
But other things here, I would say, no, I think, I think it's pretty conservative, and we're looking at the, not the worst case scenario, but we're looking at, and then there's also choices here, I mean, so we have needed, we have things that we're saying are needs, but those.
It's a need, it's not.
It's a need, you know, so obviously one's adding a staff member, a full-time staff member, which we're going to have to do something with that, because ultimately, the bottom line is, our ESL teacher is only certified through sixth grade, and we're going to have ESL students who are not in sixth grade, so we don't have a certified teacher teach those students.
And that's a mandate.
But we could solve that in other ways, we could contract out those services, there could be a teacher at the middle high school or in the ESL license, and we could, you know, modify within our own schedule, there's other, there's other options there. Right now, we're putting it out as that we're projecting the long-term need, and the thing that would make the most sense long-term would be to hire a full-time ESL teacher, that's an $80,000 increase, and doesn't mean, we could find a way to do that without doing the $80,000 increase, but, so right now, we're just putting in, these are things we're saying as, you know, there's going to be some mandates that we need to meet, but I don't think, I don't think, things could change in a negative way beyond that.
But I guess to that point, though, Andrew, too, when you look at what we did with our last budget, we had to make some cuts that were, that we weren't looking forward to, especially when it goes to staff, so we're looking at adding an ESL, but there was a tech person that was cut for that position, art, the, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things.
There's lots of things that are still missing.
And there's, absolutely, there's a lot of things we could add back in, and I'm not saying that those aren't needs, we're also trying to be realistic in terms of what we're putting out as increases in staff, and what's responsible to put out for increases in staff, but clearly, you know, we, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that were cut that we could bring back, but we're just saying that right now, based on budget projections, we're not in a position to make a large list of things we're going to bring back, but we're looking to maintain a level service budget, maintain a level service for all that we currently have, and then maybe build back the ESL piece, because we have some reality, some responsibilities to cover that.
Yeah, all I was getting at was that the last words were, hey, things could be positive. I was just making sure that people knew things could be worse, that's all.
I have a question for you, Brad.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you expand on the, I was going to have the district-wide tech fixes? Have you had any exposure yet to, or could give us any information on the town-wide IT person that was hired, and what effects they've had on the district so far? And can they do some of these installations as well? I mean.
They can do a small percentage, a lot of this really came down to, specifically for the district-wide $10,000 that's allocated in there, it's more equipment and installation, so electrician, electricians, excuse me, and really, that's really where this comes from.
Yeah, a mounted wired LCD projector needs to be mounted and wired by a certified electrician. So our tech people can do that.
Okay, well, going on, just, then just expanding on that, have you had any exposure to this person yet, this employee?
Absolutely.
Give us a little, little update on that?
Absolutely, and is he planning on coming in, actually, I'm assuming?
I mean, I don't know if you want me to address that, or Meredith to address that?
I was just curious, since we're on the topic.
I'll start, no, I think the majority of Stephen's time actually has been diagnosing, he came on, he knows about the schools already, he was an employee with us, I think a lot of times been diagnosing what's going on in town hall, we could be hearing, we're actually, he's actually working on a project to look at fiber lines and what our best option is to go throughout the town. You'll see in here that's not on there that we're going to go through, capital is looking at going to a 1 gig Comcast speed internet. Thing with that is, it adds on cost, but if we were able to get fiber line throughout the town, that would be a huge cost savings, it's a one-time cost rather than the reoccurring monthly that we have. Outside of that, Meredith, I know you work probably closest with him in terms of day-to-day operations, really add on to that.
Yep, so I can't speak to the specifics of what he's done outside of the district, but I know that he and the rest of the department have done a fair amount of work in terms of the town hall and the various departments, so meaning with police and fire, EMS, so on and so forth, but in terms of the district, has helped weigh in on the appropriate use of our E-Rate funds, as well as working with our E-Rate consultant, Brad and myself, on attracting an appropriate vendor, to make sure that we are fortifying our wireless penetration and preparation for increasing speed, so, and has definitely taken over all network updates, including work that usually occurs off hours, so oftentimes on the weekends, we'll be in touch, and he is updating our security patches, our firewall, those sort of things, to make sure that all of that is taking place. So if you recall, his position was funded in part by money that we used to pay to a contracted service, and it was difficult sometimes to ensure that they were doing what they needed to do in a timely manner, and this is just 180 degrees improvement in terms of the fact that everything is up to date, we're secure, and he's very savvy with that, as well as weighing in on all projected projects that we have, and where we're going in the next two to four. we have and where we're going in the next two to four years at the town level and the district level.
That's his big thing, is diagnosing what the town has right now and how can we utilize, looking at what the school has in place and what the town has in place, how can we best utilize that? For example, is the whole Comcast issue, is there a better route to spend one-time money that saves everyone's operating budgets long-term? And that's, that's my big project that I love that he's working on right now. But Akers, too, I think, has been in the last two weeks working over at the high school. Building switches in and he's working directly on that.
Right. And has specifically, they've specifically responded to what we need based on his diagnosis. Additionally, he's also attended several meetings with Scott and Ruby and Brad and myself in terms of the new building to make sure that there's continuity and that we have a district and municipal approach that makes the most sense so we can leverage economies of scale and make sure that we're getting the best possible service here, there, and everywhere in between.
Yeah, so Stephen's done a great job so far in terms of looking at both the needs of the school and the town. And that from my perspective, you know, I think it's come to fruition that for, on the town, the school side, we have one more person. And that one more person is working with the tech team to solve the issues of the district. And that's been a real benefit for us. I believe, we actually invited, I believe Stephen and Dave both presented the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee in September. So we invited them both to attend that. We did a little presentation on how the transition was going. Obviously, we've been a couple of months more than that. But Stephen and, and Dave did come to talk about those two consolidations. But we could definitely have them back to the School Committee if you wanted them to come back.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right, moving on to 10-year capital plan?
I would say though, maybe a, maybe a visit to our next joint meeting though, you know, just to update both committees at that point, yeah.
Okay.
All right, 10-year capital improvement plan.
I got a, I got a question for you on this, but I'll wait till you get there.
All right. Okay. Good math. So our FY 19 total, this is just to summarize everything. Carver Elementary School requesting zero this year until we get the new building online and see what's going on. Townwide technology, this represents both town and school. I'll give a breakdown later on. Transportation and the middle high school. So our, the school's total request is 289,000 of a available budget townwide of 585,000. So I made my presentation a little bit more action-packed today. I threw a couple of pictures in there.
That was one of my questions after.
I didn't want to be boring. So once, for Carver Elementary School, once the building's turned over, we're going to get a replacement plan for larger items that I think will get kicked into the capital improvement plan down the road. And a lot of times, I know in my last district too, you get caught in the, okay, it's a new building. You forget about it for 15 years because people still view it as a new building. But reality is, things need to be updated and they need to get on a capital improvement plan. I think with documents and the way this town's actually funded capital, those will get on there and funded necessarily. Townwide technology, so the town expenses total 36,000. Chromebooks for grade seven, which Meredith correct me if I'm wrong. They still bring Chromebooks from grades seven through 12 students.
Right. Now we have seventh, grade seven through 11.
Yep.
And then sixth grade is contained in the classroom. The sixth grade ones will stay and the seventh through 11th migrate to 8 through 12.
Carts. Yeah. Sixth grade will be on carts.
Middle high school will be one-to-one.
By next year.
By next year.
Yep. Middle high school projectors, I got a breakdown today of that. This will consist of the math department getting them and looks like the majority of the science department. And this 40,000 includes the actual projectors themselves and the wiring and networking that's involved in them. Comcast 1 gig, we're currently on 300.
So you want to just, on the projectors, just go back, it's 11 interactive whiteboard, well, interactive projectors for the math department. So the entire math department plus Tony Rota. And then five more traditional LED projectors for mostly for science. But the entire math department, we'll get new interactive display boards.
Comcast 1 gig, and this again feeds the whole townwide concept. They're all on our loop right now, the majority of buildings. We're looking at going from 300 mgs to 1 gig, increased speed. And I know if you were to look at what the requirements are, but the guidelines for where we should be, really they would tell us we're supposed to be at 1 gig. And this is an additional increase of 40,000. This is going to be a reoccurring cost though. So this is the big question.
I thought you said it was more upfront.
That's the, that's the other option. The other option is, this is to get it through Comcast. To go with another provider and to actually put the fiber lines in, that would cut this down drastically because you'd only have to have, usually you can build it into the agreement. But this is just for the specific fiber line itself to the school. So fiber line, I shouldn't say fiber line, this is fiber line.
Go back to, this, maybe take back and say Comcast is proposing this. This is our other option.
I got it, I got it. I'm trying to lump it in too big together.
Yeah, put it in two things together.
The fiber line with Comcast is included in the bandwidth.
Right.
That we're getting charged for. That's what's going to bump this up to 40,000.
Not up 40 from where it's at, just up to 40,000.
Correct. The open cape quote that we got would replace all fiber lines for an upfront cost. And then that would cut down the bandwidth that we needed. We wouldn't need anything through Comcast. We could go through them. Depending on the agreement that we made with them, it'd be a different various point, price point, depending on if we went 300, 500 mgs or 1 gig. Does that make sense kind of?
It does. So when, when, I mean, do you have figures for what that upfront cost is?
We'll work on it right now. Yeah. Yeah, Stephen, actually, that's his big project that he's working on.
And he's going to come back to a recommendation to both myself and Michael and Brad and Meg and say, this is what, this is what, this seems, this is what I recommend is the best value for the town to get us to the 1 gig long-term because that's where we want to be.
Right.
Because we're feeling like that's what we're going to need to really service all the devices we're going to have in the middle high school. This will really eliminate internet slowdown issues.
Well, like you said, the usage is in no way going to decrease. It's only going to increase.
Absolutely.
So having 1 gig into, and then this will bring 1 gig to the entire town, not just to our buildings. But obviously, we're concerned about our buildings.
And part of this too, part of the big push on this is, really looking at this is Comcast right now does not charge us. We have a legacy agreement that they don't charge us for a fiber line directly from the pole out in front of the elementary school to the old building. They're saying that now that we're changing the location of that, they're going to charge us another $1,000 per month. And that's included in this price. So that's another thing too, if you can pay more upfront to get rid of that cost, if you can do it, it's the way to go. And then a new server for 50,000.
And that server would be serving the middle high school. Or be in the middle high school, be serving the school districts.
Yeah. Housed in the middle high school. Yep.
Eventually housed in the elementary school.
I was going to say that.
The new elementary school is going to become the head.
Right.
The new elementary school, yeah. The new elementary school is going to become the head. I misspoke.
So why, so why would, why do you need the new server?
We need, we need a new server to maintain our current capacity. So the server that they're putting in there isn't going to be able, the server we're getting through the new project isn't going to be able to cover the needs of a server that's dying.
Okay. Transportation, 171 passenger full bus replaces one that we have that's pre-2010. Obviously, when we go to replace it, we'll look at mileage determined. And it really actually is more than mileage, it's really what the bus is going to need in the next five years. Look at that to see what the best one to replace is. And one minivan for 30,000 to replace the ones that we use for out-of-district funds. It's not shown actually in our request, that's because we have years from this current year and last year, we actually had a savings of what the actual amount from will be allocated for our new large 71-passenger buses. We can actually take that in-town meeting, it'll have to be, it'll be in the article to take that money from where it's right now and lump it into a new article item that would allow for the expense on that. The middle high school, they are looking for 15,000 in equipment upgrades. The majority of it's taken up by a double-deck gas oven, insulated warmer, and a 49 cubic foot of two-door reach-in refrigerator. And these are notable middle high school long-range, it's going to say long-range, short-term, but not this current year on the radar. Is in FY 20, we want to replace cameras and we want to have a library update. I can go into these after if you have any questions on them. FY 21, renovate restrooms, update culinary classroom. FY 22, we want to renovate the auditorium. FY 23, renovate the locker rooms. And FY 24 and beyond, we want to replace the parking lot and student lockers. Is there any specific questions on those?
Yeah, so that, that, that's just a picture that you chose then, right? Kind of like the computer with eyes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's not the cameras that you're referring to?
No, 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 not.
Okay, that was kind of my question there. When did we get?
They could, I mean, they may come like that.
In 2001.
Hey?
Exactly. Right?
Any other questions on any of those?
Yeah. These are all, honestly, we met as a, the high school academic, alt team to review these. And we kind of tried to prioritize them the best way we felt possible. None of these are set in stone. And you'll see in my next slide, I talk about the town really, it's really the town can fit them in financially. These are where we, they fit for us in our priority list, trying to match it with what the town could financially afford. And that's why we place them where they are right now.
So Brad, everything has a number except the bottom one.
That's because there's two separate ones. So the parking lot, I want to say is roughly around 750,000. And the student lockers, off the top of my head, I don't remember. The whole list is actually in...
It's in your drive folder.
The Excel document.
It's just that length, it's an Excel document.
So this was, this was prioritized sort of through like a committee? Is that how you created?
Yeah. Yep, we met. It was Janelle, Mark, Christine, Dave, Scott, myself, and I want to say, Meredith, were you in that meeting?
Mike Schultz.
Mike Schultz, we can forget about him though, but he was also in there as well.
Brad, talk me through cameras. How do they, how do they cost a quarter of a million bucks?
Cameras are expensive. They're expensive.
What are they doing? Where are we putting these cameras?
New wiring and stuff.
How many cameras? Taking a lot. This would replace both exterior and interior. And this was a rough quote that Dave had got, I want to say probably two, three years ago. And we just...
How many interior cameras do we have?
Probably every big hallway, right?
Right now, interior at the middle high school, we have, the main hallway is by the bathrooms and the main hallway is upstairs. So then we have the cafeterias and we have the foyer. But not every space in the building is covered. There are hallways that don't have cameras. This, this upgrade would put a camera in every hallway so that every hallway would have camera coverage. And then the interior, and then this whole exterior. So...
Is it wired to like the police?
Yeah, actually, it would be, be wired, it would be wired to the police station so the police could access the cameras. It's actually, it's a web-based program. What we use now is a web-based program. It could, what we put in, I'm sure would be a web-based program because that's what they are now. The police would have access to them. And then we would have access to them. You can watch them live or you can watch them tape delay. Most of the camera systems write over themselves. So you can, you know, within a certain period of time, you need to store the image. But it would, it would provide coverage for the entire, that estimate was to provide coverage for every space in the building and the total exterior. You know, like I said, that, that was a quote that was given a couple, a couple years ago to do that.
It is a new...
Yeah. Hire guards.
Could you explain that?
It's all, it's a one-time cost. Guys would be a reoccurring cost.
I'd be a little interested in library update and what that means these days.
Library update, I don't know if Meredith, I'll tell you, I'll start and then Meredith can build off if she wants. It would mean really looking at transforming how we're using the library media center. I mean, the reality is going to one-to-one technology for all of our students with Chromebooks. Right now, a lot of that was accessed through teachers using presentation spaces in there or using spaces where they could access computers as computer labs, which they don't necessarily need to do anymore because everybody has their own device. So we've gone to the concept of looking at, working with teachers and developing concepts around makerspaces.
Media space.
And I like, we call what they call a makerspace. So it could be a technology makerspace where there'd be techno, where any teacher could come down and work on specific technology-type items. That could be a series of 3D printers. There could be a series of creative avenues. So be, you know, it could have a green, a green screen and video cameras and you'd come down and do a little TV production. So you actually create spaces within the library and then support them with the appropriate technology to give students various options in terms of, and teachers, various options on how they want to learn in a more, in a different setting, a more technologically advanced way, and maybe more authentic way. So the idea is really pushing authentic learning opportunities within those spaces. So Meredith, I don't know if you want to build on that at all or...
I agree.
But you don't, you don't have to just...
I was just going to say, when we were looking at the science scores earlier and there was that concern, it's one of the big pieces right now is if we're trying to get to deeper learning and we're trying to apply the content that students are learning, we want to give spaces to do hands-on opportunities. So some of that obviously isn't a lab setting. But several high schools around here and middle schools have these makerspaces. I know Bourne is one that is often quoted, but they have a green screen, sewing machines, and a project area that teachers can be able to have students create some sort of solution to whatever problem they're trying to solve in an either interdisciplinary approach or in a...
Yeah, so it might remove, might result in changing the furniture. So we're not talking about a total structural redesign of the library, but it might change some furniture reconfigurations, some new furniture, some different types of furniture, and some equipment.
And Y-PAC is still in where the old tech area was, right? Where?
Y-PAC is currently now where the old culinary room was.
Okay.
So culinary moved over to the old, old middle school home ec room, which we had two spaces in that building that were designed as culinary-type spaces. There was a middle school home ec room and a high school home ec room. The high school, the high school home ec room became the culinary room and the other room that used, we used for various programs over the years, just different things have been over there in that space over the last five, 10 years. But it was actually probably a better design for the culinary room, especially if we need to do hood vents. So some of the, some of the new equipment he wants to bring in requires to be vented. And the old culinary room was on the first floor of a two-story building. So the ventilation would have been more difficult then. That culinary room was actually, there's only one floor and they could vent right up through the ceiling.
Chef Portland, we know. Say he. Chef Portland.
Yep.
Are these items that you're showing us here, are they already on a capital schedule?
The normal ones?
For the town?
Some of them, some of them have been for a long time. Lockers have been on there forever, man.
Lockers have been on there forever. Renovate the auditorium. Restrooms has been on there the last couple of years. The restrooms do need to be upgraded. Uh, if you go into them, you'll realize, you would agree they need to be updated. Uh, the locker room is in not great shape. The locker room really needs to be redone. Um, so it's a balancing of priorities and then partly costs. But this list of priorities came through the admin, as Brett said, the alt team, the administrative team meeting at the middle high school and prioritizing what they felt were the most important upgrades in the, in that timeframe. But there's really, you know, I kind of said at that meeting, so I'll, I said, I'll say it, the school committee meetings, I'll say it, that a lot of these things all need to really happen. Uh, they probably need to happen sooner rather than later. So renovating the locker rooms really needs to occur sooner rather than later. Uh, so does the student locker, so does the auditorium. But we also know it's realistic, it's not realistic. Uh, there's, um, you know, or there's over $2 million worth of projects there. Uh, capital's not going to be able to do $2 million worth of projects, uh, over the next couple of years.
This is a lot more than that if you add that price for lockers and parking.
Yeah, if you add lockers and parking, it's, it's, so there's a, so we realize, we realize this has to be spread out over time, but we also want to make sure that we're saying these are our needs. Uh, these are, these are spaces in the building. Yes, we've just done an accelerated repair project and we have new windows, boilers, doors, um, roof, and we're going to talk about that a little later on in the meeting.
Those were on the list forever.
Those are also on the list of things that need to be replaced.
At least some of them.
So, you know, we, but that, that, I want the community to know that project didn't necessarily bring that building up to everything it needs.
No way.
I don't want people to say, hey, you just did an accelerated repair project at the middle high school, so that building's taken care of. Uh, there's still some serious needs there, some serious deficiencies.
Airtight and watertight now is really about, you know, a little more secure.
Which need, which needed to happen as well. You know, so as I, when we get to that part of the presentation, we'll say we've had some heavy rains and.
Well, I think that was, that was kind of the discussion. What's the point of investing on the interior of the building when we don't have it, you know? The exterior is sewn up, right?
Um, if you guys look though, you do have, the Excel document has a lot more projects listed as well and gives the full breakdown of the dollar amount. Um, James, the dollar amount I had for replaced lockers was 475,000. I think it's going to be a lot more than that, to be honest with you, but the problem is, and I don't want to keep asking for quotes every year. It kind of annoys the vendor.
Right.
Well, this is eight years out. Why am I coming back to you every year? So that's until it gets closer to sit down and have a hard number on it, we'll get there, but not.
Well, and that's something that's been talked about quite a while too, because it's a, it's a strong inconvenience there. Experienced it myself.
The lockers are too narrow, the lockers are too narrow for what the kids have.
Well, and some of them don't open very well at all either.
And they're getting to the point of breaking down.
Yeah.
So we would, we would probably go to a split system where the lockers were wider and double stacked.
Yep.
And no code combination. I'm not a big fan of the code combination built in. Here's when that breaks, the locker's kind of dead.
Right.
It's got no.
As opposed to an external lock.
Uh, we would, we would be looking for a vote of the committee if there, uh, would do so to approve the 10-year plan as presented as the items that would be, uh, for FY, uh, 19.
I'd take a motion.
Well, I mean.
We could talk about it.
Yeah, I think we should talk about some of these. I mean, I.
So make the motion and we'll do that.
Make a motion to, uh, discuss the 10-year capital plan?
Well, your motion should be to approve.
To approve the capital plan?
And you can vote against that if we choose not to, you know?
So I'll make a motion to approve the 10-year capital plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Andrew?
I just would like to discuss, can we bring up the items, please?
Yeah, of the Excel document.
That'd probably be better. It's more specific.
It's not yet, it's not. Which tab were you looking at, Andrew? The middle high school? That's the summary.
That's the summary.
Yeah.
Which one did you want? Scroll down, it's on the bottom.
I see the tabs right here, but.
Uh, go middle high school, that's fine.
Does that work?
Yeah, I, that's fine. Um, just, I mean, just looking at it, if, so how does it work as far as the cost of the thing? So if we're, we're going to the town for, like I just said, a quarter of a million dollars on those cameras, comes in, we're able to find something for 100?
Well, you won't, you won't be able to find, I mean, these are.
I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
So. So capital, what, what happened? So basically if a capital item is approved at, uh, you know, obviously we, if that, that's not on this year's list, so the things in 19, they were, and we're really just voting to approve what's, we're going forward with in 19, you're not approving the future items going forward because we'll do this again next year and we'll vote the items for next year. But using that example, let's say the cameras were in 19 and you were voting to approve that tonight. And we had the number, we went out to vendors and the vendors said 250 is the number. If the project was done for 150, that $100,000 returns back to the capital stabilization fund. Uh, it can only be spent on what the town meeting votes for it to be expended on. Uh, so for example, uh, if we look at a real life example, the gym floor, I don't, don't quote me on the numbers, uh, um, I always say that for catty. Don't quote me on these numbers, uh, but the gym floor project was originally, I think, approved for $350,000. Uh, when we actually went out to bid for the project, bids are coming in lower as we've seen on a lot of our projects and it bid out at something less than that, 250, 275. Uh, so there was a little bit of a question of, well, we didn't do bleachers in the original project, can we do bleachers in the gym? And the response was no, because bottom line, each of these items are approved by town meeting for an item. So if you, when you go to the town meeting, the warrant article, the warrant article lists the item. So it said replacement of the gymnasium floor. Didn't say replacement of the gymnasium floor and new bleachers for the gym.
Right.
So if it said replacement of camera system at the middle high school and it came in under that number, that money just returns to capital, goes back to the town, goes back into the capital stabilization fund to be used in a, in addition, in a, in another year. Or a town meeting could allocate that money in a different way. Or you could have a special town meeting to make a decision to vote on that specific item, uh, which, you know, in most, I don't know any situations where we didn't specifically do that, to have a special town meeting on a capital item. Uh, but you, you could, you know, in essence, only town meeting can allocate that money and any money that's not spent goes back into the capital stabilization to be used in the next year.
You don't have that large of a variance though, unless you had larger projects. So I mean, you look at our total request this year of 280. I mean, you.
We're not going to have a variance on that.
Yeah, we're not going to have a huge. You're not going to have a large 150,000 variance on it. But when you go after bigger scale items, for example being, let's just say the cameras, cameras may all of a sudden come in at 220 and you have a $30,000 variance there that gets kicked back into capital.
But that's not, so Emery, do you have, do you, what was your motion? What was the exact motion?
Well.
I read it off of here, so I, I spoke of the whole 10-year capital plan.
Yeah.
That's what I had.
I think we're really doing it to 2019.
Correct, we're only voting 2019.
Yeah, so.
We can rephrase that.
Yeah.
You can withdraw that motion and have it be rephrased if you want.
Yeah, so I, I would, yeah. Like to withdraw that and change it to, how'd you like me to change it to?
So you're looking to approve the, the?
2019 capital plan?
Request, yeah, right?
Request for FY 19.
The total, the total.
Well, it's really, it's really FY 18 capital, which is again to the year.
No, but it's for 19 though, right?
It's for fiscal year 19, yeah. They, they label.
Capital money can be spent the second town meeting votes it. So if town meeting votes the money in April, it can be spent on April, votes on April 13th, town can spend it on April 14th. So it's really not tied to a fiscal year. So we're getting, we're getting into minutia of the exact nation of the, of the, uh, of the approved.
Right, but your original motion was for the 10-year plan, which is not what we're looking for. So basically then, Meredith, if you could go back on that 10-year capital plan?
I guess.
The FY 19 slide, which is like the second slide?
All right, and I guess you're thinking of voting the entire plan, there's going to be a new plan next year, which we prioritize all these things. And if you look back over the last five years, you voted this.
Right, right there.
Yeah.
So that's what you're, that's what we're voting on right there.
That's what's going to go forward for this year.
And that 584, 2019.
And next year, we're going to come back for the list.
Townwide available.
Right.
That, that, that capital has to decide what to.
It's statewide available of what's not accounted for already in terms of bonding and what's already set in stone, yes. So that's what's the number for all town departments to put a request for.
Okay.
Yep. When I was on the finance committee and Stephanie was on the finance committee, this is a department's, we call it the wish list. Where there are multiple years of things they wanted to get done, didn't mean it was all going to happen, happen at all or happen.
Where we wanted to have to happen.
But if we look at what you're requesting, it seems to be focused in a good priority. We're not doing anything for the middle, uh, the elementary school clearly. And most of what's being requested is that technology increase that we talked about with Comcast and a lot of that change.
And you'd be supporting the priorities, maybe not necessarily the number tied to them.
Right.
You know, if you don't feel strongly that the cameras should be that higher up on the priority list, the only thing I would say is that the, the middle high school administration put that as high up on the priority list, which you can, you don't have to accept that. You can say, I disagree with them and I think something else should be higher up on the priority list.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not.
But you're not voting the number per se, you're really voting the priority.
Right, but then again, that's for, that's for, that's for 2020.
Right, because what, I guess the other thing you should know that's going to happen is we, Brad's going to send his Excel spreadsheet to the town administrator. The town administrator is going to move all the items. Because he fits it into his 10-year plan.
Right.
Uh, now, he's not, most likely, he's not, he's not going to move anything out of FY 19. He's not going to move anything out of next year. But the other nine years, he's going to fit it in and say, here's all the requests to the town, here's what I'm projecting as available capital, here's where we can place these items to have it work.
So, so I'm, I'm, I guess I'm slightly perplexed then because it sounds like you're asking to put forth this 10-year plan to the town.
We are. We're looking to put this.
So then we do need to vote on supporting the 10-year plan.
Correct. The only thing that's going to ever get approved though, is 19 right now.
I understand that.
Next year, there'll be a new 10-year plan.
But we're not deciding that, that'll be decided by Capitol LA. We're just deciding whether you, we want you to put this 10-year plan forward.
Right.
And then if they accept 19, they can change it, they can accept it, they can do what they want.
Yep.
This recommendation from us is for the 10-year plan, not just for FY 19.
Because capital only.
Yeah, I mean, from this discussion, yeah.
But anything after FY 19, I mean.
I know it's irrelevant, but that's what, but you can't put that forth to them unless we approve that this is how we want that 10-year plan put forth. So we have to vote on accepting this 10-year plan, knowing that it doesn't really matter beyond this year, but if you have to put it forth, we have to.
And next, next year, there'll be a new 10-year plan.
Capital LA will be, will be looking for this, this is our wish list, this is what they'll be looking for.
Right.
So, um, like I said, we could change it following the next year.
Exactly, and it probably will, as it did from the year before.
And if you look on the Excel document, um, under the total tab page, I have what our total request is from the school for every individual year. I also have what's projected 10 years out for overall money. So you can see the, the actual percentage of what the school's requesting compared to what's available.
Sorry for that confusion.
So, uh, can I just recap this? So we're going to say Andrew Soler would have made a motion to approve the 10-year capital plan?
Yes.
Period.
Period.
And do we have?
And, and Mr. Carterelli made a second.
Second, thank you. Okay.
Still, and we're still in discussion.
You keep saying Mr. Carterelli, I keep looking for my father.
If you can find him, good for you, Meredith. Are there any more questions on this though? Are there any comments looking at it that way than what you're actually voting for is sort of the way they?
It's really only 19.
Yeah.
And.
Yes.
But in all honesty.
In all honesty, yes, but in, in reality though, no. You're, you're really looking at what this 10-year plan is and how they prioritize those items to, to approve that. So we're saying that we agree with their designation of how they did that. Whether it matters to, to Capitol LA, whether we agree with it or not is irrelevant, but they're asking for our vote of approval on what they decide.
And if you guys want to, um, and I think this is probably beneficial for everyone, is to get this ball rolling a little bit earlier next year rather than we're kind of last minute.
Yeah.
To be honest.
Yeah.
Um, and that's something we can look at when our, one of our first opening school committee meetings to, let's look at this, let's bring everyone on board.
See where we want to put everything coming in, yeah. Yep, I, I think that's a good idea, Brett, moving forward. But if no one has anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any animus?
I think the water department's too is still getting used to the accelerated budget.
Yeah, going for the, going for the April town meeting. Yeah, because historically, this is something that the school committee has looked at in November, but I have no problem with moving it up and looking at it earlier.
Uh, moving on to the legislative breakfast.
All right, so on October 31st, um, the town public schools held a roundtable that included local school district superintendents, school committee members and legislators. Uh, James and Stephanie attended with myself. The communities that were represented were Berkeley, Bridgewater, Radham, Carver, Dartmouth, East Bridgewater, Freetown, Lakeville, Norton, Old Rochester, Somerset, Tine, West Bridgewater and Reed's Academy. I'm going to give a, just a very general overview of the four main issues that were discussed with the legislators, the four point, main points of advocacy that school committee members and superintendents were saying they wanted the legislator, legislatures to try to address. And then obviously Stephanie and James, you guys were there, you could add in anything you want, uh, beyond my four points. Uh, the first one was, we spoke about, uh, Reed's, the possibility of Reed's collaborative building a new building. Currently under the structure, the Massachusetts State Building Authority does not support collaboratives' building projects. So there's no reimbursement for them. So if Reed's was to build a new building, that cost would fall on the members of the collaborative through increased tuitions. Um, so and Reed's is looking forward to move forward to build a building. Now, they don't have a timeline on that yet. I'm actually serving on the subcommittee for the Reed's Building Committee, uh, so I'm on their building committee, so I'll, we have a meeting, we have our first, uh, meeting for this year coming up, uh, actually next week, uh, and I'll have more information about, uh, what their intentions are, what their thoughts are in terms of a timeline, in terms of having a new building. Uh, but they, I, you know, so the members of the school committee and the, the superintendents are saying that, you know, Reed's is a, Reed's collaborative is a public institution funded through public dollars. Uh, so we didn't, we're a question to the legislators, uh, well, we don't understand why they don't, aren't eligible to apply for reimbursement for a new school through the state process. And basically, and the legislatures should take a look at that, that they, maybe they missed that when they, uh, created the law around the Massachusetts State Building Authority. Second piece was, we basically made a push for, uh, beginning to implement the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. This is something the committee's talked about a lot, uh, so I'm not going to go over all those recommendations again tonight, it's an issue we've discussed. Ultimately, the Foundation Budget Review Commission says that the state is underfunding education primarily in, in two areas, uh, special education and healthcare costs, uh, which obviously have been impacts within our own district. And we talked, we talked about both healthcare costs and special education costs in this evening's meeting and saying that the state has to put more money forward, uh, to support, that those things are growing exponentially and that, that cost is falling on local districts and the state needs to pick up a larger share. The third item that was discussed, and actually this was more from the legislators than from the superintendents and the school committee members, but I think it was the legislators saying to the school committee members and superintendents, they have to think about this, uh, is that there's possibilities at the federal level, the federal government's going to cut some of its funding for Medicare and Medicaid, uh, which will force the state of Massachusetts to decide if they're going to cover those federal cuts. The legislators were basically saying to us, their sense is that the legislature will, uh, fund those at the state level instead of the federal level. If the state government has to pick up those costs, uh, they basically said that's going to make it really hard for them to implement any of the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. It's going to be hard for them to increase their funding for state education if they have to pick up those additional healthcare costs through Medicaid and Medicare.[1546.06] Now, we don't know that that's gonna happen, uh, but obviously, there's been some discussions at the national level of, um, you know, through the Trump administration, that there would be cuts to Medicaid and Medicare in terms of funding, and the state legislators are saying, hey, if that happens, we think the states could end up picking that up, which will have impacts across the board. Uh, the last piece that I thought was interesting, uh, and we actually talked about MCAS a little bit, but I put it on the list, James, and I don't know if you want to address that, is there was just a discussion about town and school relationships, and saying that as budgets, uh, get tight, uh, there's been a real strained relationship between, uh, board, town boards, the Board of Selectmen, um, school committees, superintendents, uh, and that we all, you know, really, they were just, uh, saying we all need to work together to sell the importance of education to the community. Uh, and it shouldn't be a situation where it's the town boards against the school committee, uh, fighting for dollars, which is the reality of maybe that's sometimes what happens, uh, but they're looking for what's, what's, what can we do to all work together, uh, in keeping that focus on the value and the importance of education within our society, uh, for everyone, and that the town needs to support that. Uh, so James, Stephanie, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to my list as kind of a summary of what happened at that meeting.
I have something I wanted to add. Do you want to add anything?
Sure, please do.
One thing that I found very interesting was that all the legislators pretty much said the same thing, in that they wanted to hear from people more. They wanted to hear from people in their districts more about issues that they're concerned about, um, and they felt like people didn't reach out to them enough, which I thought was very interesting.
And to that point, they actually even said that they felt the school, the state association of school committees and the state association of superintendents could do a better job lobbying them. And they said they're actually, they have better lobbying from-
As well as the unions.
And, and the MTA.
Yeah.
They said that the group that lobbies them the best are the municipal, uh, administrators. So that is their strongest lobby. Just thought that was an interesting comment.
Yeah. So, I may know that our rep has hours here at Town Hall that are posted, um, on the town website, so I just wanted to put that information out there so that people know that she does come here, um, and that all of them were asking for more feedback and more lobbying and more contact from their communities, because they care about what's happening, clearly with what you folks went through with the last budget process here. Our rep is very involved with, with the situation in Carver, but still, they want to hear from families, and they want to hear from everyone. So, reach out to them.
Well, I, I think to that context, looking at what we discussed, and there was some really intelligent conversation in that room that day, but it also felt like a political process. Um, because when, I look at number two and number three, the recommendations for the foundation budget, and I know you said, you know, where states have to pick up and start to collect some of that. In all honesty, we're paying the state, so anything they're taking is coming from us anyway. Ultimately, to me, two and three, from the conversations that I heard there, and there were several comments about this, healthcare reform is the only way we're ever gonna change anything, because everybody's being buried by this fun, this cost. Everybody, except healthcare companies, who are raking it in right now. And unless there's a reform that changes what they're doing, there's really not gonna be any magic money coming from anywhere. And one of the biggest takeaways that I brought, that I actually talked to Scott when we left, was, you know, Senator Pacico was talking a lot about, um, about they're doing a lot more demographic study, and they need to do a lot more demographic study, because basically, over the next 20 years, the senior population is gonna increase double, and the child population is decreasing. So when you get an elderly population that's advocating, that's calling their representatives, which is kind of what Stephanie was talking about, they're reaching out, they're getting their committees out there. They're the voice that's being heard, whereas most busy parents aren't, and aren't making those calls and aren't connecting. The representatives are basing their decisions off who they hear from. So a lot of, a lot of what they need to hear, as Scott said, from the superintendents, from the school committees, from the unions, they don't feel like they're hearing. They don't feel like they're getting that message. They feel like the message is going the other way. And they didn't look or sound very optimistic towards what was happening with the financial future at all, in any way from my perspective in that meeting.
And it may sound like there's, uh, big changes coming on the state end in terms of the funding of public education.
Whatsoever. Basically, number two, the recommendations of the foundation budget was like, yep, we know what's going on. And that was pretty much it. There is no solution, no way, no window of any idea of how they would ever be able to resolve that.
Did they talk about special ed at all? About circuit breaker or any?
There was, there was some little conversation.
Yeah, there was discussion about circuit breaker, and the superintendents and the school committee members saying, you need to fully, you need to fully fund circuit breaker. And they said, yes, we know that, we need to fully fund circuit breaker.
But from where? Was their point, you know? And, and, you know, there was a, it seemed like a lot of political meandering to, to me.
The other, the other issue, on that issue, in terms of, you know, they just kept pointing to that. Um, the reality is that what they're bringing in through sales tax is down. Uh, so sales tax is always under, it's under their, uh, projections. And they said a lot of that is still due to online retailers, uh, that they've closed some of those loopholes, that you do now pay taxes on online purchases, but they were saying, and I don't, I don't know this factually, this is just what they were saying, the legislators were saying there's still a lot of loopholes out there where there's a lot of online products that you can purchase, but you're not paying sales tax.
Without paying state tax.
And the amount of, and the shift in society to purchasing online has really under, underfunded the sales tax. And so, the last couple of years, the states made their projection on what they're gonna bring in on sales tax, and they just haven't brought that in. Uh, and that 1% of all sales tax revenue goes towards, uh, funding education. Uh, but there, that number's been underprojected each year for the last couple of years. Uh, so they, you know, they didn't have an answer for that, except for saying, pushing both at the state and federal level to close those loopholes and say that if you, no matter, if you live in Massachusetts and you purchase an item, you have to pay a sales tax, uh, even if you purchased it online from somebody else.
Even in that small forum, the party delineations were clear in the conversations that were being had. There was talk of the millionaire tax also, and some conversation of how that's not gonna get anywhere, because they promised that that's gonna go towards transportation and education, but they can't make those promises, because that money has to go into a general fund and be allocated every year. It can't be something that's promised to a particular piece like that, that you can't say money's automatically gonna go to this, but that it has to go to a general fund and then be voted to that every year. So there, there just wasn't, uh, there wasn't a bright and shiny breakfast, I would say, ultimately.
Breakfast good, please?
Yeah, it was, it was pretty.
It was okay.
How much did they charge you?
No, I mean, they, they're not charging for that.
It was, I will say that the, the representatives were there. They showed up, and, and they were willing to put in. And that was one comment that I said to them, as Stephanie mentioned, they want to hear from us. And, you know, my comment to them was actually, there, there are representatives. They need to be reaching out, and they need to be making sure they're accessible to people to get to them, because that's what their responsibility is, to represent the voice of people that are their constituents.
I, I, oh, sorry, Scott, I was just gonna say, just to reiterate that, each town that was there had both their representative and their state senate, state senator and state representative there.
That's good. But the thing about it is, they, they do represent us, so they could, I think, I think any of these politicians could make a, a, a better effort in actually going to some local meetings in their towns.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they go to a school meeting, go to, go to a selectmen's meeting, exactly. Find out what's going on. You know, they, they, they rely on us to reach out to them.
To come to them, to go to them, up on the hill.
Well, let's invite them.
It's, it's, you know, we do invite them along, and they have been invited. But I, you know, and again, I, I think, I think you're exactly right, Stephanie. The key is persistence.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll be persistent. I have no problem with that.
Because-
But I say we get them here.
The solutions that were offered weren't, there weren't any solutions that were offered.
Yep. Different perspectives, different interpretations.
Right. And that was about it, really. Excited now, Andrew?
Thrilled.
I was curious about when you mentioned about the, the healthcare, about the, with the federal adjustments possibly coming down.
Hmm.
Because before that-
That's what they talked about, that.
Before the ACA was here, Massachusetts had their own health plan, that they basically funded ourselves, you know, so I think we'd be in a better shape than many other states, because we already had a, a system, a framework in place.
And Andy, there are representatives, I, I, I mean, I guess to Scott's point with MCAS, I, I mentioned the same thing to them. I said, if we are so great in this country, if Massachusetts is number one, why are we jumping from MCAS, the park, and back to MCAS? If we're working, why are you changing it? And, and there are representatives up there that fought for that and agree for that. I know Kate Correll tried to put a moratorium on parks so that they couldn't move anything with it until we decided what we wanted to do. There's just, from the perspective that I got from those representatives, is not enough people speaking up for them to accept that as a valid position. They're not hearing enough of what you're saying. Like, if, if it's not broke, why are we continually trying to fix it? But you kind of know, because with federal funding is flaunted in front of them, they're gonna take the funding to get the money in order to make it happen. But now it puts us in a place where now they're gonna take that money away, and we have no platform to build upon. Now we're gonna start losing a lot.
I, I think if I was to, there to, if I could have been there to speak honestly on them, I think I would have said to them, if they were really serious about finding money for education, they'd look into stopping the corruption in the state welfare system and the, and the, the social benefits that is rife with fraud. So, I mean, you-
There were lots of good opinions put out there, Andy, I think, you know, but ultimately, I don't know if Stephanie would agree or disagree. I saw you nod your head a couple times. Regardless of what was put forth, there were no conclusions that were made, or no suggestions that were, that were like something to build upon. It was just, the issues that were there were what were confronted.
The only thing that was there was that whole concept of the millionaire's tax, which will be on the, um, 2018 ballot in November, and whether, and whether that money would, what benefit would come from that. And that wasn't a lock saying it will give a benefit, it was just a question of what benefits will come from that for, for towns if that's passed.
But there was talk of the constitutionality of that on the ballot, because of the fact that the way it's worded, that the funds are automatically allocated.
I believe there's a challenge to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So it may not even make it to the ballot, bro, you know?
Yeah, it's complicated.
I've heard two different things on that. One was supposed to be first for education, then it was gonna be then for transportation and roads.
But it, but it can't. They can't do that.
Right, yeah, that's what I heard. It's, it's unconstitutional, yeah.
We're, we're, we're only reporting what the legislators said.
What they said.
So we're not, we're not stating, so I'll just say that, well, this is what the legislators said at the meeting. If, if, could you, could you-
The sales tax issue, how to send that coast of education to our town. So if they can take 1% of the sales tax, why can't legislators make sure that they do it now?
They absolutely, they, they absolutely-
Their misinformation.
Absolutely, they can't.
100%.
It just can't be in the amendment. If the amendment-
The fair share amendment also, it's a progressive tax, we're looking at it, it's 12% of all.
Yeah, and I, to, our, our goal, our goal isn't to debate the merits or the not merits of the fair-
I understand this, just misinformation.
And we're, again, it's, we're only reporting what the legislators said to us, so there would be their misinformation.
But I, and I think, Tammy, to your point, that's kind of what we're saying, is that depending on who you were talking to, was depending on what information you got.
Right, absolutely. So that, that, that was our point. So even if, if our, if that has not been clear, that was our point.
Even in that microcosm of what we're looking at, even in that little room, it was very clear, the distinctions and the opinions that were coming out.
So what's scary for me is that we are so co-education, talking about there's no, like, no, we're, like, we're looking for a way that we can help, especially should get out of the situation that we're in, right? And so to look at it, like, I, I guess, like, there is that hope. So, I get it, there is, we need to go through some, because I'm just, like, okay, that's-
Well, but, but see, if you listen to the school committee members and the, 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 um, superintendents that were there, I'm tell, healthcare reform is the way you're gonna find money, that you're gonna need, but nobody's gonna face that hill. They were, they are, they ignored that word, that, every time it came up, it was an end of a conversation.
And the only, in terms of that issue, I will say 100%, I have no problem that, I have hope that that would be a benefit for education within the state of Massachusetts. If the fair share amendment was passed in 2018, that that would be a positive outcome. We're just, I 100% have that hope. I hope, I hope that happens. Uh, so we're not trying to say that we don't have that hope, and, and honestly, we're not even debating, if I, if this discussion is becoming for the audience, a debate between the merits of the fair share amendment, that is absolutely not our intention.
No.
That's not what we're doing here right now.
Very premature.
We're just reporting out on a meeting we attended, and what some of the people said at that meeting. And I think James's point on the whole concept that, even within that room, on legislators, was interesting to hear, they all had, they were, they began to politically posture on their position on the fair share amendment. And that, so we want, we got to witness that happen. So we're just ma, we're reporting out to the committee that we witnessed that happen, but it wasn't that, we're honestly, we're not, the goal of this committee is not to take up the fair share amendment tonight, to give our opinion on it. Uh, I, I, I do have hope for it. I do, I do think it's a possible, you know, so I don't, eventually, we probably will, because I think, I think this will be similar to, and we did, they did say this at the meeting. Uh, though, some of the legislators spoke about the charter school, uh, and how the school committees and the MTA partnered together to take a position on the charter, the charter school movement, and the charter school question from the last one in 2016. Uh, so they're saying, they were saying they think it would be beneficial if that similar type of thing happened around the fair share amendment, that the MTA and school committees come together, uh, and support a position on that. And I'm sure this committee would be willing to take that up when that comes along, probably next fall, as we get closer to the election. Uh, but that, so I, I think that's something we'd be willing to do.
So then a takeaway would be that, from, from their request, clearly, is they, they, they didn't have any answers, but they don't hear from us enough. So if anybody that's listening is willing to do anything, get in touch with your representatives, get clarity exactly on what that fair share is, is gonna be about, how it's gonna work, and what is really gonna happen, from the different perspectives of what they're saying is gonna happen, what's the actuality, what's the language of it. And, and to try and see where that's gonna go, because right now, from the picture that I walked away from, there's no clarity in any of it. I don't think anybody's on the same page with it right now.
I think before you can ask someone to consider any question like that, they have to have a definition of what it is.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and so-
With the, with the charters, it was very clear how they were stating it and what they wanted to do. So it was, it was very easy to determine what you thought and how you felt about that, but the mixed messages they're sending out, clearly, i- it depends on what you want to hear, is what people are hearing, and what you're willing to listen to. So I think to get the support, it's gonna take people calling to make sure that that message is clear, exactly what it is. Thank you, Tammy, for, thank you for jumping in there, really, though. Because it brought a perspective that we weren't maybe thinking about as we were going through it, yeah.
And we want to make sure we're clear about what our intentions are. If that's being misunderstood, that's, we need to clarify that. All right, we, there was, that was just an update. It was an update on a meeting we attended. Uh, so, we're ready to move on with some other updates?
Other updates. Accelerated repair.
Okay, accelerated repair. Uh, at this time, all the windows and doors have been installed at the middle high school. Uh, the roof and boiler part of the project are complete, and both systems have been tested in terms of recent rain and cold, uh, and performed well. Uh, the parts of the project that still need to be completed, and really, we're at the 98%, 99% piece. Uh, we're talking about, uh, moving into just the last little items, but there's a small list here. Uh, cleaning interior and exterior of some windows, some have been cleaned, some haven't been. Uh, miscellaneous door hardware items, uh, cores and cylinders for locks, uh, door closing arms. I think at our last meeting, we spoke about there a couple of doors have been broken, uh, and a couple of doors weren't regulating well. So we've decided to put arms, closing arms, that will ensure that the doors can open and be locked open. Does that make sense? So they'll be able to open up and turn the key, so the doors stay open. Now, we're not gonna do that on every door in the building, but we're gonna do that at both front entrances, the locker room doors, entrance to the middle school gym, uh, entrance to the high school gym.
Doors that were broken, did we?
Doors that have been broken have been fixed.
Did we eat that, or?
No, that was part of their cost. So they, and they were actually able to fix them in place. So they came out, uh, and fixed those doors in place, uh, because we said they weren't regulated right. So they, that was at their cost. And now the arms will be at our cost, because that is a change order. They were not originally designed with the arms that will lock.
Yeah.
Uh, so that will be, we'll have to pick that up as a change order, but that should be happening in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and then some doors still have weather stripping and rain deflectors. There's, there's a few, you know, some of those odds and ends that need to still happen in terms of caulking of windows, some weather stripping here and there. And then demobilization, removal of the site trailers, dumpsters, extra materials, et cetera. Um, you know, our projection is that, I, I giggle a little bit, I say, because I keep saying, this last, this will be our last update. My projection is this is our last update on the middle high school accelerated repair project. Uh, the time, the time overruns have not affected the increase, the cost of the project. So because it's taking a longer period of time, doesn't mean it's costing the town more money.
Yeah.
Uh, that cost falls on the contractors for not meeting the timelines. Uh, and, so we're not paying them additional monies, because they didn't complete it as was planned out. In, actually, under the contract guidelines, we're at a point where we could be getting into a discussion of charging them for not meeting the timelines. Uh, but that, that hasn't happened, because we know, uh, the condition of the metal panels around the windows caused some problems, and also the condition of the metal panel along the roof line. And we said there was, uh, an issue where the, actually, water was getting under the roof from under the metal panels. There were some un, there were some unforeseen conditions. So they're still on the project, because they had delays based on those unforeseen conditions. Doesn't cost us money, but it would not put us in a place where we'd say, well, you've really overrun your time limit, and you can get into the part of the project where you could face penalties for not meeting the timeline, because we felt that would be unfair based on the unforeseen conditions that they've seen. Uh, but I wanted to make it clear that, uh, the project is, uh, is occurring within budget. Uh, we have not spent the entirety of the contingency, even with some of the change orders we had to do. Um, if, I have the numbers on that, so, uh, I have the, I didn't put it in the folder. I, I'm looking good back, some full, full book papers.
Here's roughly $100,000 left.
Oh, yeah. So, the contingency was $236,783. At this time, to date, we spent $147,355. Uh, and those changes were for the, the major changes were the, uh, we decided to paint the front of the building, the metal paneling, which wasn't on the original project costs. Uh, and then, some of the changes we had to make around those metal paneling issues, especially along the roof line. Those were our most expensive change orders. You know, there's, there's been other things along the way. But I wanted to just reiterate that concept of, we haven't gone over budget, it's just gone over time, uh, but at no additional cost to the town.
Is there any warranty on, performance warranty on these windows?
Yes, absolutely.
Is this the company that we would see to?
We would see the, the producer of the windows.
Okay. We would, you would have to use this vendor, this installer, to take them out.
Yeah, because they're, they're, if, if they're warrant, if they're warranted.
They're the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know the timeframe on each wind, I don't know the timeframe on each individual item. Uh, the doors, every, every item has a warranty, whether it be the roof, the doors, the windows. Uh, I, Brad, I don't know if you can speak knowledge about the warranty of each individual item.
The way to find it, the way to find that out.
Oh, yeah, we can get that information.
I mean, that's-
Or say 20 years, but I'm not-
It's easily, it's easily, it's easily accessible.
It's probably 20 years.
On each of those items. Um, no matter, so.
Okay.
Yes, they're all fully warranted, and we would go back to the installer of that product.
Right.
Uh, whether it be the roof. Uh, and that's all part of the inspection processes. They, like, for example, for the roof, uh, the company that produced the roofing product came out to inspect that it was properly installed. So that's the final piece of the warranty, is they actually come out and say, yes, you properly installed our product, so now we issue you the warranty. Because, and that happens for each of the things, the doors, the windows, they come out, they test them. Uh, they were actually doing some water testing on windows, uh, just this past week. And what they do for water testing is they actually set up a, a machine that puts water at the window that estimates, forget the rainfall rate, but it's 60 mile per hour winds and a certain rainfall rate for 15 minutes. And they, in essence, the machine just jet stream shoots the water at the windows and see if it lets any water in. Uh, so that, that, that's, all those things are underway in terms of, uh, ensuring the warranties on the project. I just don't, I just, sorry, I can't speak to the exact year of the warranties for each of those products.
It's understandable.
The roof one was issued.
Okay.
They used to be, but they're not.
Any other questions on accelerated repair?
Yeah, there were no leaks, was that what he was?
Oh, I was just saying there, yeah, so, I was just saying that, we had, we had some heavy rain recently, uh, and the roof held up well, uh, so we didn't get, we didn't, we didn't get leaks in the roof from our, we've had some good storms.
Yeah.
Where we've had some heavy rains and some high winds, um, and the roof, the roof has done well in that process, which we expected, we expect the roof to do well in that process. Uh, that, that was it, that's all I was gonna mention. Um, so that was beyond the warranty testing, that was real life testing of storms. Uh, and then, you know what, in terms of monthly school building report, um, I, if people are okay with this, just based where we are in time, there hasn't been a lot of changes on that project. Uh, you know, I can just say that we continue to move along well, we're on time and on the budget. Um, build, the inside of the building is really beginning to take shape every ti-, and I said this each meeting, every time you go in, it comes more and more to life. Uh, but there's not a lot necessary to update you in terms of progress there. Uh, so if, so if people are gonna move on to middle high school field project, and maybe we can do a more extensive review at our next meeting, in terms of where we are in the elementary school. If everybody's okay with that?
Fine.
All right, um, middle high school field project. So, uh, the town has appointed a five-person committee to oversee the proposed middle high school field. The members of the committee are Andrew Solavona, uh, Dave Seentoff, Michael Milonowski, Gary Garrettson, and myself. Uh, last April, at town meeting, the town approved two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars for design services for a new track and field complex at the middle high school. Uh, that is through CTA, so right now, uh, through CPA, through, um, so that, that's how that would be funded, that's how the design service is being funded. Um, so community preservation, the Community Preservation Act and the Community Preservation Committee approve that money. Um, we've hired PMA as our project managers, PMA is the group that's working on the new, on the new elementary school with us. Uh, and we've also selected Activitas as the designer architect for the project. The scope of the project will include a new football field, a new track, a new press box, and a new concession stand for the current field location. Uh, we had our kickoff meeting with Activitas on Monday, October thirtieth, we had a second meeting last week. The project has a quick timetable, and the goal is that we'll have an approved design, bid documents, and that the project will go out to bid prior to town meeting. We wanna actually bring a real number for the town to vote on at town meeting to approve the project. This would be funded again through CPA, uh, so it would be capital, uh, sorry, capital, it would be community preservation monies that will be going to fund this project. So the town will be asked us to, to support this as a CPA project. Uh, based on this quick schedule, there's a couple upcoming meetings people should be aware of. Um, there's a field community project meeting, Monday, November twentieth. Uh, at that meeting, we're gonna get our first projected cost of design proposals, so the first go-means, we start looking at designs, they're putting some design proposals together for us. They haven't given us a cost yet on what we're proposing, but our meeting on November twentieth will get a cost, based on some preliminary designs. Uh, so that's a meeting that's open to the public, um, it is here, uh, at town hall. On Monday, November twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, at seven o'clock, uh, we are gonna have a public hearing on the project. So we are inviting the entire community of Carver to come out on Monday, November twenty-eighth, and share your opinions on the designs that's been proposed. The biggest issue that's gonna be discussed is a grass versus a turf field. Uh, so, right now, that's kind of the, I think, well, obviously, we're looking for input on the entire design, but I think the most, not controversial, the most thing that people are gonna wanna talk about is whether we put in a grass field, or whether we put in a turf field. There are some budgetary concerns along those lines. Uh, a grass field can be entirely funded through community preservation. Uh, CPC cannot, uh, fund a turf field, because it's not natural. They can do everything around the turf field, they can do the concession stand, they can do the press box, they can do the undersurface, they can take out the old field. They can do everything through that fund, except purchase the turf and install it. Uh, so, there would be an additional cost if we decide to go to the turf field in terms of how, um, how it's funded. There'd have to be a funding source different from community preservation, and we can work on what that different funding source would be. Uh, and in general, turf just costs a little bit more, uh, than grass. Uh, so the, so that's gonna be part of the discussion that takes place. Absolutely, we want come, we want public opinion on this issue, we want, we wanna build what the community wants to build. Uh, so we wanna hear from the community on what would they want for a new athletic complex at the middle high school.
Scott, so you said that's, that's Monday, the twenty-eighth?
Monday, the twenty-eighth will be the public hearing.
Twenty-seventh.
Sorry, it's, it's gonna be on?
Monday's the twenty-seventh, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna go to, sorry, Monday, the twenty-seventh, is correct.
And what time?
Seven.
At seven, here?
Here, at town hall, yeah. So we have Monday, Monday, the twenty-seventh. And then, the final meeting is, right now, the town is proposing that we have a meeting of groups involved, including the school committee, the board of selectmen, and CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, uh, to make a determination on turf versus grass on Tuesday, December fifth. Uh, and, and then we'll make that decision going forward on what we believe is the best move for the town. Um, ultimately, the goal, like we said, is if this was approved at town meeting in April, we could, as I said earlier, uh, same with CBC funds, once they're approved by the town, they can be spent. Uh, so we would actually be looking to begin this project possibly in May. Uh, they would be out at the field, uh, working on building the new, with the goal of a turf field, they believe they could get installed prior to September. Uh, so it would actually be opened and up and running, uh, beginning of school next year. Now, we said that about the accelerated repair projects, so maybe it would be October. Uh, but, the goal would be that the project would actually be completed in the fall. A grass field takes longer, it needs two planting seasons, so they would have the field there, but it were to be planted in the fall, would have to be replanted in the spring, wouldn't be playable probably to the next school year. Uh, so those are all part of the factors that we'll look at, and my goal tonight is not to go through every factor of turf versus grass. Uh, that's what we're gonna do, uh, a little bit on Monday, the twentieth, that's what we're gonna do on, on Monday, November twenty-seventh. But I wanted to make the committee aware of those dates, uh, and, and where we stood in terms of this project.
And, everybody seem workable for December fifth, that Tuesday, December fifth, if that joint meeting does occur?
Yeah.
Scott, the only thing that I would say, looking at the, the building report, um, you weren't at that last one where we had the, uh, the grand opening?
Yeah.
For the subcommittee? Our next meeting is on the twentieth?
Yes, I know, it's a conflict.
Uh, we were also looking to have either Chad or Walter there to clarify some of the questions that we had.
That we could definitely do, uh, PMA has, Chad and Walter are not representing us from PMA.
Okay, so somebody else on this project?
Different person.
Okay, so that is something that we were looking at, I know the PTO is supposed to be invited.
Yeah.
Um, and we were looking at having one of them to clarify, in case-
We could absolutely do that.
Okay, perfect.
Any questions on terms of where we stand on the pro-, field project at the middle high school?
Didn't you just do, the town just do extensive well repair over there, with irrigation repair over the fields?
We didn't. Uh, so we put in two new wells, uh, so the irrigation well, that was part of our, that was part of what we had to do as a DEP consent order, because the irrigation system was tied into the water system in the building. And DEP doesn't like that setup anymore, that was acceptable when the building was built in nineteen eighty-seven, but is no longer acceptable. Uh, so they asked us to separate those systems, uh, so we did put in, uh, two new wells, two dedicated wells that would be totally for irrigation. Obviously, anything that's gonna happen on the new site would be tied into those irrigation wells.
And these meetings on the fifth and the twenty-seventh of eighty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Moving on to recommendations from superintendent?
All right, we got a field trip request for Six Flags for May, uh, for the high school band. Be looking for a motion to support that.
How are they gonna play on the roller coaster?
They actually perform there, there's a competition there, so they participate in the competition, and then, once the competition's over, then they're allowed to, to go on the roller coaster.
They have a stage area.
Yeah.
Really talented if they could play with that roller coaster.
Like to make a motion to approve the field trip requests for the high school band to Six Flags.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
All right, and then our last issue, uh, for this evening is disposal of school properties. Uh, so what I've, what I've, uh, put in your, in the drive folder is the policy. Uh, we're looking for an approval to dispose of recycled items at the elementary school. Um, you know, I've linked that in there. My proposed motion would be that we approve the superintendent and director of finance to dispose of surplus items at the elementary school by the most environmentally advantageous method. This policy actually requal-, it asks us to do it in the most environmentally advantageous method. It actually also asks us to kind of, um, bring a list to you on a regular basis. We're, Brad and I are being honest, we don't know in our current situation if that is a practical thing, for us to bring you a list of everything that's being disposed of the elementary school.
Over the next year?
Because also, the, the elementary school is being disposed.
Right.
Uh, so, if the, if the committee wills it, we feel like this motion of, you're giving us the blessing to go forward and, uh, dispose items in the most environmentally advantageous method. And we'll come back to you and give a report on specifically what the big picture is, in terms of, you know, we've hi-, we've hired this company that's gonna come in and take these, this group of items and bring them to Puerto Rico, or bring them to a disadvantaged area in the United States, or a third world country. These general things are gonna be able to just be recycled. Uh, but, uh, we wanted to try to, um, avoid a listing of every item being disposed of.
That was part of the conversation at that subcommittee meeting too, as to where we go when we're breaking down the building and what's gonna be done.
Right.
Cause it's a very short window of, of when the kids are out of the school and when that building is coming down.
And we have to, we're responsible, sorry, we're responsible for, if you were to flip the building over, if it does not stick, we have to get it out, that's our responsibility, yeah.
So we're talking about the building itself, I just wanted to ask you about examples of what we were talking about disposing?
Materials in the building.
Materials in the building, not the building itself.
Not the building itself, the material is in the building.
The building itself is actually being disposed of in the project.
Those kinda things.
Gotcha.
That's-
Tables, desks.
Books that are-
Riquel items that we're no longer using.
Yep, technology, yes.
Outdated technology.
They had to come for us for everything, we'd be meeting every other day.
So, you know, like Brad said, if you, if you turn the building upside down, anything that would fall, we're responsible to dispose of.
And I've already reached out to, um, town departments, they're gonna come in, do a sweep to see if there's anything that they wanna grab. Um, one thing that I've, I've already drafted, and I'm hopeful that, once we get approval tonight, I want to, um, the elementary school to send out a letter home to see if anyone wanted desks, student desks. I wanna give it back to the community first, before we get rid of them, any other option, um, so apparent will fall out of form.
That's something that, I mean, when we meet on the twentieth, Brad, before you send that out, you might wanna meet with the subcommittee, just to see where everybody's mindset is with that, as far as sending things out to the community. Cause I don't know what their thought was, that, with, with some of what they were gonna do.
And eventually, one of our goals is to hire, there are companies out there that take items and bring them someplace. Like I said, either a third world country, or Puerto Rico, I think's gonna come up, uh, so, we, we contract with someone to do that, obviously, we'll bring that back to the committee. We're just looking to not have, to bring- Well, we're feeling like this motion would give us the ability to stop the process of a disposal of things.
Yeah, I just think that's a conversation, if you start opening up, putting desks out there, then it can be other things, and, oh, I'll pick it up tomorrow, and I get it this day.
Well, no, that, that, everything's gonna be, and whatever we send out, is, that's what I didn't wanna get into. It's gonna have defined dates of when you have to pick it up, and that's, if you don't show up-
It's a very short window, and that was a big part of our conversation with that committee, is what our actual timeframe is and what has to be done within that timeframe.
Yeah.
And how that's gonna happen, so. We're meeting on the, the twentieth also, so next week, next Monday.
Yeah, uh, it's at six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
In the central office.
At central office, so I, if anybody would like to attend, you're very welcome to attend.
What's the biggest thing you think that, what's the biggest item that we'd be getting, getting rid of over there, do you think? Just in, but, well, just in your estimate, estimation?
Big thing, meaning in value, with size, what?
Yeah, I mean, what do you mean?
Many think of you as a, all, a whole bunch of desks, chairs.
Desks and chairs are gonna be our largest items, largest in terms of number.
What are they mostly made out of? Is it wood, metal?
There's a lot of plastics in the, and what the newer stuff has too, though.
Might be able to make a little money for the district, call them, uh, metal recycling place.
But that's, that's where Brad and, and, I mean, that's where we were looking for Chad and Walter to be in, because they, I remember conversations with them, where there were some limitations to what you can do with some of those materials, as far as when you're talking about fundraisers or money, or-
No, no, just, like, you, instead of just paying to get rid of them, you could pay, I mean, you could have a scrap company come and take them, and you get paid for it.
Possibly.
Very small value on it, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, um, for example, Plymouth, when they got rid of their building, they sold blocks of ten rooms.
Yeah.
They got twenty-five dollars, and a few didn't even sell.
Right. So that's honestly, that was a, that it's-
Twenty-five dollars for a block of ten rooms, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, the discussion, that was the big part of the discussion at the subcommittee the other night, and where, what they're, where that's gonna go, and ultimately, it's a, it's a decision of the building committee, because we're just a subcommittee of that, they'll go back to how they're gonna, have decided to do that.
Absolutely. No, my, my thought, when I looked at the school priority list, according to, um, according to the policy, I thought, first, give it back to community, then dispose of it, if there was no interest. But we can talk about more on the twentieth, if it works for me.
But this, this motion would be supportive to us.
For this policy, yeah. So I would take a motion on that at any point.
I'll make a motion to, um, we approve the superintendent and director of finance to dispose of surplus items at the elementary school by the most environmentally advantageous method possible.
Second.
Motion made in second, any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous, none opposed? Reports from the school committee? Anyone?
Just wanted to wish everybody happy, uh, holiday season kickoff, I mean, we're already in November, so, have a nice Thanksgiving, and, uh, get, get the winter closeout.
Um, I, I agree, it's clearly dark out there, so please be mindful. Um, and I also wanted to, um, mention to everyone, in case people, not everyone knows, uh, this coming Friday and Saturday at the high school, they're gonna put on the twenty-five annual Putnam County Spelling Bee on Friday and, uh, Saturday night from seven to nine PM, tickets are ten dollars at the door. I haven't seen their production, but I've seen that production before, and it's a great show, so, and I've seen some pictures of the kids in action and heard some great things. So I wanted to mention that to people to go out this Friday and Saturday night to support the high school drama club, I'm sure they'd love to have you, and have a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Just the same, um, have, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, um, just keep, keep in your mind what we are truly thankful for, and what you're thankful for in your life, and try to look at things in a positive way. That's it, thank you.
Well, as, as Walmart and Home Depot and Lowe's start to inundate you with the stress of the Christmas holidays already, one of my favorites is Thanksgiving, because it's based on family, friends, football, and food.
Yeah.
And that's about it, and, and I hope that everybody takes this time to slow down and enjoy it, before they get caught up in the stress of the holidays that come after. Um, and belated, one more time of belated veterans, happy Veterans Day to all those who've ever given any service to this country at all. And with that, I would accept a motion to close out and move to executive session.
Like to make a motion to move to executive session, to connect strategy session in preparation for negotiation, collective bargaining with union personnel.
Ending regular session also.
And ending regular session.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's gonna be a roll call.
Aye.
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 And aye.
And a, and aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. He has adjourned.